Because of the ongoing pandemic, Sussex County Board of County Commissioner meetings will be conducted remotely via Zoom. The public may participate online or by telephone. For the meeting agenda, visit the Sussex County website at www.sussex nj.us and click Commissioners under Events. To participate in the meeting, click Online Info via phone dial 61646-5588656. Enter meeting ID number 5261211125 and the passcode 07860, which are posted in Online Info. The Agenda link is also posted, if you are on your computer, in the chat link of this Zoom. This is the Commissioner meeting, February 24, 2021, at 6:09 PM, regular business via Zoom. I would like to call this meeting to order and begin with a roll call.
Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Director Fantasia.
Here.
Commissioner Fasano.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo.
Here.
Commissioner Yardley.
Here.
At this time, if you would please join me in a moment of silence and a salute to the flag. Today, I would like you to keep in your thoughts the 273 Sussex County residents who lost their lives to COVID, including 130 residents and three staff members of long-term care facilities here in the county. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. The United States of America.
And to the Republic. Which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
With liberty. And justice for all.
Number four is the public statement. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice is defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 10, 2021, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, Star Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for Public Announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. Number five, approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Any opposed, nay? Number six, proclamations, certifications, and presentations. We have a recognition of Black History Month, and I would invite Commissioner Fasano to please read that.
Thank you, Director. Proclamation: Whereas we join our fellow Americans across the United States this February in celebrating Black History Month and the remarkable accomplishments and the lasting impact on our nation by our African-American leaders and citizens. And whereas during this national celebration, we applaud the significant and lasting contributions of the African-American community, which has overcome tremendous adversity to build lasting change in our country and positively influence our culture, national identity, and daily lives. And whereas Black History Month grew from Black History Week, initiated 95 years ago this month on February 12, 1926, by Dr. Carter Godwin Woodson, the son of former slaves and a distinguished African-American author, editor, publisher, and historian, who became known as the father of Black history. And whereas Dr. Woodson emphasized the importance of teaching African-American history to every child in this nation, explaining that those who have no record of what their forebears have accomplished lose the inspiration which comes from teaching of biography and history, end quote. And whereas, this is a time where we should reflect not only on the great strides made toward freedom for all people, regardless of race, color, or creed, in the pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness, but also a time to recognize more must be done to fight injustice, prejudice, and intolerance, wherever it may be. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners thus hereby proclaim February 2021 to be Black History Month in Sussex County, and encourages everyone to honor and celebrate the contributions of African-Americans to our daily lives in America and towards the betterment of life within Sussex County and across the Grove. By order of the Board of County Commissioners, Director Don Fantasia, Deputy Director Anthony Fasano, and Commissioners Patillo, Yardley, and Carney. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the proclamation as entered into the record.
So moved.
I'll second it, Commissioner Carney.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Number seven, public hearings, there are none. Number eight is a public session from the floor. This public session is for questions or comments pertaining to agenda items only. Now to clarify, we are having a public session regarding two resolutions that will be read into the record towards the end of the meeting under number 20, New Business, and number 19, Unfinished Business. There will be a public session at that time for discussion of those two resolutions. This public session is for questions on any and all other items on the agenda. Before we open this session, we ask callers wanting to make comment to first state your name and your municipality. The clerk will create a roster and call each in the order received. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. So at this time, if there's any individual who wishes to speak on the agenda other than items under New Business and Unfinished Business, which will have its own public session, and there will be time at that time as well to speak on any issue that you may wish, please state your name now if you would like to be added to the list for this specific session. I see in as far as unmuting, I need to check and make sure with the call moderator that individuals do have the ability to unmute themselves at this point. If you are on your phone by pressing star six, if you are on the actual Zoom via a digital device, you just go to your name and press the little microphone with the red line through it. And I do see there's an individual with their hand raised as well, so I don't know if she is able to unmute herself. So I'm just going to be the moderator. Thank you.
I just have a question. I'm a little confused because it kind of seems we were under the impression that the resolution was part of the agenda, so.
Yes, but again, we have.
As to whether we can speak on that now.
No, what we're going to do, because we do have many other items on the agenda that we are getting through before that subject comes up and those are read into the record, we're asking.
That would have been really nice to know ahead of time, since a lot of us have a lot to say this evening.
And you will have your opportunity to say what it is that you would like to say. At this point, we would like to dedicate some time to individuals who might have to comment on the plethora of other business that exists on the agenda.
Well, a lot of us had more than, you know, a lot of us had six minutes planned. That's all I'm saying. A heads up would have been a little more fair and bipartisan on your part, but just saying, that's all.
Caller, would you like to identify yourself for the record?
Sorry, I wasn't able to unmute myself. My name is Kate Saler.
I'm sorry, Kate, what was the last name?
To be able to make both of my statements is, you know, just for me personally, I think they're both extremely important.
Kate, Kate, I'm sorry, I just needed your name and municipality. That's why I just want to put it in my notes.
Sure, go ahead. It's Kate Saler, and I think both of my statements are very important, and I would like a chance to say them both. And sorry, my municipality is Sparta.
Nick DiPiano, Newton.
This is regarding an agenda item, Nick.
Yes, yeah, I have a question about one of the agenda items.
Okay, and Nick, the municipality?
Nick, Newton, and it's Nick, like Michael with an M.
Oh, Mick, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. All right, so do I go now, or are you with more people, or?
No, we're creating a roster. The director will call you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other individual that wishes to speak on an agenda item for the roster?
Zoe Heath Vernon. Sorry, there was an issue being able to unmute myself.
Thank you, Zoe. Any other individuals?
Yes, Michelle Van Allen, Hardison.
My name is Christoph Defo, and I'm from Jersey City.
Chris, I'm sorry, could you repeat your last name?
Defo, D-I-F-O, D as in David, I, F as in Frank, O, from Jersey City, New Jersey.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Terri Corso, Stillwater.
I'm sorry, the name from Andover?
Brittany B.
Brittany? And the last name?
Just B.
You're not giving me your last name, just the last initial?
Yes.
B as in boy.
B as in boundless.
Just wanted to make sure I got the right letter.
Yes, hi, this is Almir Osmanovic from Hamburg. I just have a question I wanted Director to clarify for me real quick. It's not going to take a long time.
Sir, would you like to be added to the list?
No, 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 I just have a real quick question. So there's, this is for the public session, right, for the agenda items. You're going to have one for the unfinished business and then another one for open forum, is that correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
So I'll remove your name from the roster then.
Yes, yes, I just had that one question, thank you for, thank you for clarifying.
Donna Mullin Franklin. And I would like to clarify, is this for the agenda items, or is this for the things that need to be handled under 19 and 20?
This is for items other than 19 and 20, there is separate open public sessions for 19.
Okay, it would be nice to make that clear in the beginning, thank you.
Which is what we did, thank you.
So Ms. Mullin, I'll remove your name from the roster, I assume, at this time?
Yes, will there be a notification later to sign up for the other two items?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all we needed.
Okay, hearing no one else come forward, Terri, if you can begin calling in order.
I just want to clarify, so for Ms. Saler from Sparta, that's going to be until the 19 and 20? Okay, then I'll pass you. Mick DiPiano from Newton.
Hi, yes, so I have concern about the establishment of Chief Clerk Board of Elections. I'm unsure why we need to make that, and I'm concerned that it'll be a position that's not elected, but one that is given, and that that could make our election security very partisan. I want to know what, why this is being done, and what's going to be done to secure the bipartisanship and safety of the elections in the county. That's it, so move on, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mick, this is Commissioner Fantasia. The very beginning of what you said was cut off, and if you could just repeat the actual item on the agenda that you were referring to.
Okay, Resolution B, Establishment of Chief Clerk Board of Elections and Salary Range.
Thank you.
Did you have another comment, Mick, or can I move on?
You can move on if you heard my list of questions about it, then you can move on.
Okay. Sorry, I just have to reset my clock here. The next caller was Zoe Heath from Vernon.
Hi, thank you, I was just, I'm sorry, I'm just a little bit confused, why, we're not talking about 19 and 20 currently, correct?
Correct.
I'm just confused because they are agenda items, is it, why do we, can we only speak on items during the public hearing? I'm just a little bit confused on that.
Because we want to give dedicated time to that, we know that there's a lot of feedback, so we are actually adding a public session to focus specifically on that, and we wanted to give individuals who did not have commentary on that ability to comment on the other items on the agenda, but those two items are getting their own specific public session.
Okay, so, okay, thank you, sorry, very confused, thank you.
Okay. Did you have any other comments, Zoe, or can I move to the next caller?
That was it, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Michelle Van Allen from Hardison.
Yes, thank you. Well, I was just confused on Mick's question, you did not answer his question, you just allowed him to present it.
Yes, that's correct.
Were you going to give him any feedback?
Yes, absolutely, after everybody has spoken, we will address any questions pertaining to the agenda.
Oh, I see, all right, so I want to speak about Appointment, Resolution A of Ronald Patillo, to reappointment to the Board of Commissioners for SCMUAA. This is Sylvia's husband, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and is this, is this an appointment that is open to other people that would be eligible to appoint? Was there an open field of people, or was he just there and then he got reappointed again?
This is a reappointment to that position? Anybody at any time could express interest of joining that board, but this is just a five-year reappointment to the board?
Is this a paid position?
Yes, it is.
And were other, were there other candidates for this, or was just Ronald?
To my knowledge, no, there were not, but that is a question that could best be answered by Administrator Poff, if there's something that, something came in unbeknownst to me at this date.
Is that an answer, are we waiting for that person to answer, or are just moving on?
We're gonna, when we, we're gonna take all of the questions, and then we can address each.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, I'll proceed then to Christopher from Jersey City.
Yes. Yes, hi, yes, I'm sorry about that, I'm actually going to hold off until, I was confused about the resolution issue in 19 and 20, so I'm going to hold my time until that, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have, is it Terri Caruso, Stillwater?
Got it, okay. The only thing I wanted to say at this time was, I'm just curious why it's so late in the month for Black History Month that the resolution was done, that's all.
I can answer that quickly, before we get to that, that's, we recognize that our first meeting, American Heart Month, and the day is the first week in February, that it's National Wear Red Day, so we chose to recognize that at the first meeting because it coincided with the week, whereas Black History Month runs the entire month and do not specify a specific day.
Hearing none, I'm going to move on to Brittany B. from Andover.
Brittany B. Yeah, so I'll actually wait later, I asked in the chat, well, because I joined on a little bit late, I wasn't sure what we were asking for speakers for, but also, like, why do you think that it's appropriate, though, to wait toward the ends of the month? Like, I know it doesn't specify a date, but don't you think that it's kind of not doing a service to say anything about his Black History towards the end of the month, which is like also the shortest month of the year? Could y'all hear me, or was I on mute?
No, I'm sorry, I apologize, yes, I can hear you. Again, we added it to the agenda to include it in February, and that was what the Board's decision was, thank you.
So how did that decision come to be? Did you like consult any of the constituents or people of color, anything about how that was going to go about, or?
No, we've recognized Black History Month to recognize the accomplishments of African-Americans to the country, and I find it to be appropriate that this Board did recognize those significant contributions.
Do you think that is a little too low and a little too late?
I do not, but thank you for your input, I appreciate that.
Do you?
Thank you.
That was our last caller for comments.
Okay, at this point, I need a motion to close the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Number nine, we're moving on to Commissioners' comments, so we're going to begin with Commissioner Carney.
All right, thank you, Dawn. I just want to start out with Department of Engineering and Planning. I met with Bill Copenall, the 2021 Resurfacing Program. Program's scope is to mill and pave plus, plus or minus 34 miles of county routes. Estimated construction cost on that particular job is $9,900,000. As for the winter storm response, as of February 22, the DPW responded to 20 winter storm events. They have 64 dedicated plow routes and eight district garages. They have 73 plow trucks, including two spare trucks. I just want, on a side note, I did get to meet with them last Friday, the mechanics down at the DPW, I spent two hours with them. When we lump, when everybody looks at the roads and whatnot, we say, hey, you did a good job at DPW, but there's, there's people in the background, the mechanics, that are working round the clock, that are, you know, working at night in the cold, getting under trucks, and I just want to say kudos to those guys and ladies, because we do have one woman, they do a very good job keeping our trucks on the road, so. Community Development Block Grants, we have two. One is CB1, in the amount of $282,788, that's earmarked for eligible projects located in Branchville, Franklin, Hamburg, Stanhope, Sussex, Monique, and Newton, and CB2 is $994,861 for other eligible projects within the county. I don't have anything from the NJTPA at this point, while other projects are out of county, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carney. Next, we are going to move to Commissioner Patillo.
Thank you, Dawn, very much. Tonight, I have some very wonderful news to start the evening off. Just recently, Carol Noddrich, our Administrator of Health and Human Services, was contacted by a woman named Najee from Rockefeller Foundation Research. Najee asked Carol a number of questions about the county's Vault Home Testing Program, and during that conversation, Najee told Carol that Sussex County was a leader in the nation in offering at-home testing. Because of this, the Rockefeller Pandemic Solutions Group invited Carol to take part in their national panel to talk about innovative solutions for getting COVID testing into the community. The Pandemic Solutions Group is a peer learning network established by the Rockefeller Foundation in order to facilitate the exchange of best practices for public health authorities and officials working to scale up their pandemic response efforts. The bipartisan group of senior public health officials convenes virtually every two weeks to discuss a range of pertinent pandemic response topics. I would like to acknowledge and thank our business administrator Greg Poff, who spearheaded and negotiated the contract with Vault for the at-home testing kits. I would also like to thank Carol Noddrich, who often works behind the scenes, to make sure our services for the public are second to none. We are very proud and looking forward to having Carol Noddrich represent Sussex County on this very important national panel. It is quite an honor for our counties to be recognized as a national leader in our COVID testing program, and I want to congratulate Greg and Carol for their perseverance in making this happen in the county, so thank you so much for all your hard work. Sussex County Chamber of Commerce will hold their annual meeting and event this Friday, February 26, at 6:30 PM via Zoom. They will be introducing their new Chair, Buffy Dobbs, as well as the Board of Trustees. Tickets are $35 and include a snack pack and champagne. This year's event includes local hidden talent entertainment by local business members. It should prove to be quite an interesting event. The Chamber is also holding a job fair on Thursday, March 4, via Zoom. They have been very successful with several of them. They are working one-on-one with unemployment and matching job seekers to employers. They had 385 job seekers at their last job fair two weeks ago. Next, I would like to mention that there are important changes to the Payment Protection Program, the PPP, Round Two. Yesterday, the Biden Administration announced several changes in an effort to increase opportunities for very small businesses to access the PPP loan. To that end, during an exclusive two-week period beginning this Wednesday, the Small Business Administration will not review or accept applications from businesses with more than 20 employees. After the 14 days, all qualified businesses can resume applying. It is important to complete and submit the PPP loan applications prior to Wednesday if you have less than 20 employees. Submitting materials sooner will help ensure that your application is reviewed earlier. This program is set to expire at the end of next month, and approximately half of the funds allocated are still available. The Chamber highly encourages businesses to take advantage of this benefit, including the opportunity for a second draw loan. Next, we have the Backpack Snacks for Kids. The Sussex County Social Services Food Pantry provides weekend meals for students in eight school districts. iHeartRadio stations WSUS, WNNJ, and MAC are kicking off their annual Backpack Snacks Food Drive on the 2nd of March. Food can be dropped off between March 2 and March 22 at Vice Markets in Franklin and Newton, Visions Credit Union in Augusta, Toyota World. Visions Credit Union in Augusta, Toyota World, Subaru World and Volkswagen World of Newton, Selective Insurance and Newton Medical Center. The radio stations will be onsite collecting food at Weiss Markets in Franklin and Newton on March 20th and 21st from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Next, there is help for residents who need transportation to vaccination sites. Residents in need of transportation to vaccination sites located throughout Sussex County can contact Skidens Ride at 973-579-0480 for assistance. Please contact Skidens Ride prior to registering for your COVID-19 vaccination so that transportation can be coordinated with your scheduled vaccination date. And last, there are Senior Services Caregiver Support Groups, Virtual Caregiver Support Group Meeting. It will be a Zoom meeting. It'll be Friday, March 5th, 2021, from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM. And then there's an in-person caregiver support group meeting at the Apcon Community Resource and Wellness Center at 47 Apachong Road in Apcon, Tuesday, March 16th, from 5:30 PM to 6:30 PM. And if you need more information or you would like to register to attend these meetings, please call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1288. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Sylvia. Next, we move to Commissioner Yardley.
Thank you, Dawn. Just want to let everyone know that the site up at the county fairgrounds continues to operate. It was moved outside for a week. I was up there, I worked Saturday and Monday, and both were extremely cold and we had a snow, heavy snow on Monday. And the volunteers continue to show up and continue to provide the service. We have a wonderful volunteer group that works there. And I want to say, the operation continues to run smooth. We're looking forward at some point to get additional vaccines up here so we can increase the number of people going through the site. These office senior services are still providing services to the seniors through Meals on Wheels. And there's another program where they're providing frozen meals to people that have been identified as being nutritionally at-risk individuals. And for March, they're going to do something special. There'll be a little St. Patrick's Day type meals. And they're also providing meals for religious services this time of year. That's my report, Dawn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, Deputy Director Fasano.
Thank you, Director Fantasia, and thank you to all who are joining us this evening. I do have just a few updates to give briefly tonight, and I'll start with some really good news picking up where Herb left off at the Sussex County Vaccination Site. And that is a notification system is finally in place, meaning residents will no longer need to continually check the Appointment Plus Calendar for openings. Instead, residents can now preregister with Sussex County and provide their email address, along with answering a few questions. As a block of openings become available, an email will be sent to the one that you provided to schedule a date and time for your vaccination. Appointments will be scheduled in the order received. And if you do not successfully schedule your appointments when the openings occur, your email remains in the system for the next round of openings. And that will continue until you are able to schedule a vaccine appointment. Sussex County, like many other governments, originally believed that we would have the ability to use the state's NJVSS system for appointment scheduling. That never happened, and it resulted in residents in many areas, including here in Sussex County, being understandably incredibly frustrated with having to check back often to see if they can find an opening. This does eliminate that issue. It does notify our residents when openings are available. And it represents another step in our vaccination process and also makes this easier and less intensive for our residents. As of February 21st, the county has provided 4,331 first doses and 839 second doses. Demand still remains much greater than supply, and I don't foresee that changing anytime soon. But our vaccination site is built for the long haul, and it's committed to administering our vaccine as quickly as it is received. And as a reminder, this notification system is just for the county's vaccination site at the fairgrounds. We do encourage residents to sign up with other providers in our area to potentially be able to schedule an appointment sooner. Those links can be found on our website as well. Of course, the county is continuing our partnerships with Duval Health, LabCorp and Vault Health, as Sylvia signified. And super big props to Carol Noddrich for getting recognized like that. That will continue to provide testing to our residents at no charge. All of this information can be found on our county website. As has been reported, and I think it is worth mentioning, that we do have a sustained downward trend, the daily rate of infection. It is down close to about 50% from where it was from the holiday season. And there are a lot of factors contributing to that, including the impact of vaccines, herd immunity, the advancements being made in treatment and antibodies post-infection, just to name a few. The potential availability of this one-dose Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine may very well have another positive impact on our position here in Sussex County. And of course, we will continue to keep our residents abreast of all COVID-19 developments, including our daily reporting. And I do just want to tip my cap to the many county employees who are here every day, working their tails off every day, and keeping our communities safe and informed. From an educational standpoint, Director Fantasia, Commissioner Yardley and myself had the opportunity to participate in the Sussex County Community Colleges Board of School Estimate Meeting regarding their upcoming budget, which is, which is a balanced budget that yet again calls for no increase in funding from the county and no tuition increase again. I believe that is for the fourth year in a row, if I'm not mistaken. It also calls for new programs such as electrical lineman, medical assistant, massage therapy, a career technical occupation expansion, along with other items such as volleyball and golf. I believe Sussex County Community Colleges budget reflects the county and the state's fiscal reality, while also keeping a focus on student enrollment, academic effectiveness, campus atmosphere, and innovative partnerships and relationships that will absolutely positively impact student achievement here. Speaking of student achievement, I was thrilled, truly thrilled, to hear the recent news from Sparta Public Schools in terms of their planning for the return of full-day instruction and in-person instruction planned to start next month. I was so impressed to read about their attention to detail when it comes to ensuring safety protocols are met, providing options to students and families who may wish to remain virtual for now. I know that was not an easy challenge. I give Sparta Schools a ton of credit for their work in making this a reality for both Sparta students and their families. This does come at a time where I believe we have reached a point where we have to try every avenue available and at least giving students and their families the ability to return to in-person instruction where feasible and where safe. Just recently, even the CDC has acknowledged the negative impacts that prolonged virtual instruction can have on students in many ways. And I think we have all seen that to some degree within our own educational communities as well. And finally, I did just want to thank Assemblyman Worth and Senator Oraho, both of whom are the respective Republican Budget Officers in their chambers for their work and sharing with us and the rest of the state the concerns the governor's budget bring and the negative impact it can have on New Jersey and the negative impact it will absolutely have on New Jersey taxpayers, who is yet again not necessarily a constituency the governor mentioned much yesterday. So I look forward to reviewing that here at the county level. And I am thankful for LD24's work in advocating for our county and the taxpayers who call it home. So thank you, Director, and that concludes my report for today.
Thank you. I appreciate that. To start my comments, I'm going to address the questions that were posed during the first session. So before I begin my COVID updates, the first question came from the public regarding, it was Agenda Item B under 13, the Establishment of Chief Clerk, Board of Elections and Salary Range. Mr. Poff, would you please give the public a little bit of background on that?
Yes, Director, thank you. The reason that this item is being brought before the board is the commissioners are aware, as some members of the public, that the prior Board of Elections Administrator, Marge McCabe, retired late last year. And the Board of Elections made it through the most recent general election with existing staff. But now is the time that the Board Administrator be replaced. And the county was advised by the New Jersey Civil Service Commission, of which the county is subject to its regulations, that the title that Administrator McCabe had previously held is no longer available for the county's use. And so, working with the State Civil Service Commission, we went about trying to identify the most appropriate title for the administrator that will serve the bipartisan election board. And in consultation with the bipartisan Board of Elections, the title that is on the agenda this evening is what was settled on. And in order to have that incorporated into the county's organizational structure, such a resolution is in order to be considered by the commissioners this evening. So again, the title is being created as a result of the county being notified that the prior title used for Administrator McCabe is no longer available to us. And this new title effectively represents the title that Ms. McCabe's successor will be appointed to by the bipartisan Board of Elections.
Thank you. To clarify, the Board of Elections actually makes their selection and their recommendation, and then the commissioners then approve. Next, the next question involved the reappointment of Ronald Patillo. I'm going to also defer to Greg, but with, with the statement that Mr. Patillo, I don't know the exact years. He has been serving on the SCUMA Board for well over 10 years. And his service to that board predated Commissioner Patillo's election to this board, that I do know. But Administrator Poff, can you also address that?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I might just defer this to the clerk of the board, Ms. Lyons, inasmuch as she's involved with accepting the correspondence that I believe was received by the county relative to the utility authorities' recommendation for the reappointment of Mr. Patillo to the MUA Board.
Thank you. Terry?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to get my files together here. We had received a letter of from Mr. Dan Perez, who was not seeking reappointment. And there was the appointment of new member John Wesley to the board. And the recommendation was to proceed with the reappointment.
So the recommendation comes directly from SCUMA to this board for approval?
I would like to defer to, I wasn't prepared for this question this evening. I just have to.
That is, no, I'm stating that that's not a question. So the recommendation comes from SCUMA. It comes before this board, and then this board approves the recommendation that comes from SCUMA.
Like any appointments, we always go out to all the boards and get the information from them. We also have volunteer forms on our website for anyone who wishes to volunteer for a board. And people also go through that avenue to make themselves known to the board. So.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so I'm going to start this evening with a COVID update. Again, at this point, as of February 21st, the county has provided 4,331 first doses and 839 second doses of the Moderna vaccine. The county continues to receive 500 new Moderna vaccines each week, along with second-dose vaccines. At this point, we're administering 500 new doses, 500 second doses each week. Our capacity is 200 a day, six days a week. So we have yet to receive from the state our 1,200 vaccines in total. So we are hopeful that the state will be able to increase our numbers of vaccine doses. Again, who's receiving the vaccine? We adhere to the orders for distribution of vaccine available for medical personnel, first responders, seniors 65 and older, and ages 16 to 64. But in our county with Moderna, we are giving to 18 to 64 because the Pfizer vaccine is approved to us for 16 and 17 years old. And those are for individuals with underlying conditions. Vaccinations are also provided to everyone who works at the site or volunteers at the fairgrounds vaccination site. Commissioner Fasano again mentioned the new system for registering. So first, we were able to ensure that individuals live, work or go to school in Sussex County. Secondly, we took a percentage of the vaccines for senior citizens each week who do not have internet connectivity. And our office actually handles assisting those individuals in booking appointments. And now you may preregister and you will be notified when there is an appointment available that you may go on and register. Now, as far as COVID infections in the county, we've sustained a downward trend. It continues. So we are down more than 50% from the rates of infection from the holiday season. There are several factors that contribute to the decline of that. The public refers to it as herd immunity. We feel that that may be from the impact of vaccinations and persons benefiting from antibodies post-infection. And then, of course, reduced social interactions from these winter conditions and these terrible snowstorms and whatnot may also be a factor in helping reduce co-mingling of individuals. We continue to monitor those reports that come out. If you read in the news about variant strains that have reached the New York metropolitan area, the CDC and pharmaceutical companies advise that the vaccines that are being administered, they insist that it does provide effective protection in warding off these variants that you may be reading about. And the Health Division continues to investigate the new COVID-positive cases. Contact tracing, quarantine assignments continue to take place. So to give you some COVID stats, in Sussex County, the total number of residents that have been tested in the county, Total residents positive, 9,379. That's a 7% positivity rate. Total residents recovered are 8,305. That's an 88% recovery rate, with a reminder that recovery means that public health nursing was able to contact that individual, confirm they are not hospitalized or have not spoken to any next of kin that would indicate that the individual succumbed to the virus. So the total positive numbers that are under investigation currently are 801. So that's 8%. Total deaths, 273. Long-term care residents that have tested positive are 736 in total. And again, the long-term facility deaths are 133. So 49% of the deaths experienced in Sussex County did originate in those long-term care facilities. Our hospitalizations are reported each Friday. Now, just to give you an idea of kind of where the trends were going, in December, 92 COVID-related hospitalizations were reported, with 78 of those in Newton Medical Center. In January, 122 COVID-related hospitalizations in Newton Medical Center alone were reported on CDRSS. That's the State Notification System. Now, thus far, February 1st through the 19th, that's the most recent date that I have. So we're coming up on the end of February here, and we have 27 COVID-related hospitalizations. So we see a downward trend now. I participated in the Chamber of Commerce call this past week, and the head of Newton Medical Center, Atlantic Health, spoke to us, and actually, it was really, really enlightening to hear of some of the new treatments that are being offered. There's actually an infusion therapy that's being offered to patients who are recently diagnosed. And they are able to actually give anywhere from four to six infusions a day have been happening. It takes a few hours when you go to the hospital, and it's done as outpatient, but it has really made impact on the need for future hospitalization. Bob also stressed to us the importance of trying to keep individuals home with moderate illnesses. And some strategies have included oxygen at home. home visits, home medical visits. And this is all, you know, worked in concert to be able to keep those hospitalization rates lower, along with a lower overall infection rate. So we are seeing an absolute positive trend. We do know on the weekly COVID activity report that we are in the Northwest, and we're still in orange. So three regions in the state of New Jersey are yellow, which means moderate activity. We're still classified as high activity in the counties that we are grouped with. And those counties are Morris and Warren, Passaic and Sussex. However, we do see those numbers coming down. And in some of those categories, we are considered moderate. So hopefully, we'll keep seeing those trends. I also participated today in the Human Services Advisory Council meeting. That's held monthly. And some updates were provided by Carol Novart, very similar to what I just shared with you. And we had some representatives from the state also speak about some funding. I do know there were a couple concerns presented from some members. There has been a decrease in funding for a specific program that dealt with early intervention for child abuse. And that was a concern. So that's something that needs to be followed up on to see if that can be reinstated somehow, because that funding did not come through for this year. The other thing that was brought up by multiple individuals, especially from the Center for Prevention and Counseling, they were very, very concerned about the legislation that was passed two days ago regarding minors and use of marijuana and alcohol. Under that bill, it was proposed, and then it was signed immediately following that session. Anyone between the ages of 18 and 20 caught with pot or alcohol will be fined $50, but for minors under the age of 18. And there is no specification on that age group. It doesn't say, you know, any specific group under the age of 18. The police can issue a written warning for alcohol or pot possession detailing the person's name, address, state of birth, the circumstances of the warning to prove probable cause. But the police are not permitted to notify the minor's parents that they have been found with pot or alcohol unless it's that minor's second violation. So multiple violations result in a referral for help from public or private programs, and parents or guardians will be notified. So on the second time, parents may be notified. And on the third, there is a referral. There's also an issue that was brought to my attention that minors are not subject to arrest, cannot be searched for marijuana or alcohol because they cannot legally give consent for the search. And a police officer faces criminal liability for violating the above following guidelines. So municipalities are prohibited from enacting ordinances penalizing minors for consuming marijuana or alcohol on private property, or consumption of non-smokable forms of marijuana in public by people aged 21 and over. And selling marijuana to minors or buying it for them is a simple $250 fine for the first offense, $500 on the second offense, and a petty disorderly person's offense for a third and subsequent offenses. So once an individual sells marijuana to a minor more than three times, it can include up to 30 days in jail, or a fine up to $500, or both. So the concern came from asking if there was going to be any additional funding for education prevention programs. I mean, there's been no information yet. This legislation is brand-new coming out. I think it kind of took a lot of these agencies by surprise. They were shocked about its impact perhaps on youth and traditional early intervention efforts to help ward off substance abuse and addiction. There were a lot of strong feelings in that meeting, and I took down some of the concerns. And we will certainly follow up on those to the best of our ability and pass that information over to our state representatives in District 24. Because, again, a lot of the individuals in those agencies were very, very taken aback by some of this in the efforts to be able to help help young people if they were experiencing any kind of substance abuse or addiction issues. I am going to wait for my last update from the Community College regarding a speaker from yesterday. I will include that in the commentary that goes along with our unfinished business tonight. So at that point, I will conclude my comments for this evening under nine. We're going to move forward to number 10, which is the approval of the Consent Agenda, which is Letters A through I. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the Consent Agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. If any commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do so now. Hearing none, I would like a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, A through I.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? Pass. Number 11, Approval of Minutes. For the regular meeting, February 10th, 2021, an executive session minutes, February 10th, 2021. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting and executive session, please.
So moved.
Second, Commissioner Carney.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Signify by saying nay? Pass. Number 12, Appointments and/or Resignations.
Dawn, I need to recuse myself from this vote, please.
Thank you, Sylvia. So I need a motion to adopt the Resolution A.
So moved. Anthony.
And a second?
I'll second, Commissioner Carney.
Thank you. Discussion? And a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo? You're recusing yourself, so noted.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Thank you. Number 13, Resolutions. I need a motion to adopt the Resolutions A through F.
So moved. That motion, second?
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Number 14, Awards of Contract Change Orders Bid. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the Award of Contract Change Orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. I need a motion to adopt Contract Resolutions A through C.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Number 15, Financials. A Resolution for the Payment of the Bills List, February 24th, 2021. I need a motion to adopt the Bills List.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'm sorry, who made that second? I couldn't determine the voice. I apologize. Anthony?
Terry, no, Commissioner Carney. I will, I'll put my name in after. I apologize.
That's all right. It just sounded a little off in here. That's all.
I picked on the new guy. I get it.
It's okay. Sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, so I have a motion, Commissioner Patillo, second, Commissioner Carney.
Correct. And discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have an introduction for first reading. A Resolution Authorizing Cap to Limit County Budget Appropriation Increase in CY 2021, county budget to 3.5 over the previous year's final appropriation, subject to certain exceptions, and to establish an appropriate cap bank. Motion to adopt this ordinance and to authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as introduced for first reading, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center, together with notice of public hearing, stating that a hearing will be held on March 10th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m., prior to the final adoption of this ordinance. So I need a motion for that.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And for discussion, Mr. Poff, would you please, for the public, explain this resolution?
Yes, thank you, Director. This is a resolution that is put before the commissioners on an annual basis. And it's important to note that it is, as a result of change in state budget law that was implemented a number of years ago that eliminated what was known as automatic cap banking. The cap banking now requires the commissioners to authorize this resolution. And what cap banking represents is a financial tool that the county uses as part of its overall financial management plan. The resolution that the commissioners are considering this evening allows for the final amount that would be allowed to be raised by taxation to create a cap bank for use in either the current year or the two subsequent year's budgets. This resolution does not indicate that the amount to be raised in taxes will be increased by 3.5%. And I can assure the public, as we have been in development of the county budget since August of last year, that we do not anticipate being anywhere near the 3.5% that this resolution otherwise would allow. But the cap bank, which will be created this evening, allows for the county to have flexibility to provide for appropriations in case of emergencies, unforeseen expenses, or increased costs beyond the control of the county. And while we do not have any of that this year, the creation of this cap bank would allow us, for example, if we were to have a year where pension expenses might increase by 7%, the amount to be paid to the state of New Jersey for the care of patients at psychiatric hospitals would increase by 20%. And health insurance would increase by 10% all in the same year. And there certainly have been scenarios similar like this that have occurred in past years. By having the commissioners create this cap bank, the county would be able to accommodate those increases without having to cut service in other areas. The cap bank does not replace good fiscal practice or planning, but does allow for such emergencies as I'd outlined just now. And that is the explanation of the resolution that the commissioners consider this evening.
Thank you. And again, to remind the public, there is a public hearing for this on March 10th. This is for the first reading only. So at this point, Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney? Commissioner Carney?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Now we have the remaining items, Resolutions C through F. I need a motion to approve Resolutions C through F.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Next, number 16, Personnel. Resolution Authorizing Personnel Agenda of February 24th, 2021. I need a motion to adopt the Personnel Agenda.
So moved.
I'm sorry.
And a second?
I'll second, Commissioner Carney.
Discussion? And a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Next, number 17, The Administrative Report.
Yes, thank you, Director. Again, I would just like to thank the Board for all of its support, particularly in terms of the work that's being done to address the pandemic. I was pleased to host one of the twice-a-month calls with the mayors earlier this week and reviewed much of what's going on with a particular emphasis on the county's vaccination site and the implementation of the new registration system that Commissioner Fasano mentioned before. I'm very pleased that we were able to advance that working with our website vendor at no additional cost to the county. We believe that this will reduce some of the frustration that residents have in terms of looking to make an appointment. Of course, it does not resolve the fact that the demand for vaccine far exceeds the available supply. I was on a call today with our vaccination team, the state of New Jersey, and all of the municipal mayors were invited to participate on that call. Once again, we were informed by the state that the County of Sussex meets or exceeds the various metrics that the state has implemented in evaluating the vaccination sites. So I'm very pleased that we have scored high marks in terms of our implementation. Again, with the improvements to our appointment system, I believe that that goes a long way to address some of the concerns and frustrations that we've heard from the residents. I'm looking forward to meeting with the Budget Subcommittee and the Capital Projects Committee later this week to put the finishing touches on the 2021 budget. And thank Commissioner Carney for his time last week, where he participated in what I know some commissioners dread is the county administrators' orientation to county government. And we packed quite a bit of information in five and a half hours. And again, I appreciate his time and attention along with the various department administrators and division directors that came in to share the overall operations of the county with him. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to number 18, County Council Report.
Nothing for tonight. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, number 19, Under Unfinished Business. A Resolution Opposing Hate. Now, I have the text here and this resolution. Now, I have the text here, and this resolution was made public as well for review. I did want to make mention that there was, the Board was made aware that Congressman Gottheimer was actually present at Sussex County Community College yesterday, and actually spoke regarding racism and hate groups. I was a little surprised, the Board itself, on, just yesterday, I have two emails that I received, one from an individual by the name of Lauren Gennelli. I received it at 11:36 yesterday morning, and it stated, hello, Congressman Gottheimer will be in Newton at the Sussex County Community College this morning, please let us know if you have any questions. And then I received the second one from Cheryl Kraus, Deputy Chief of Staff, at 1:56 yesterday afternoon, that also stated, good morning, Congressman Gottheimer will be in Newton at Sussex County Community College today, please feel free to reach out if you have any questions. There wasn't really context with that, and then I found out that the congressman did speak at the college, but it was at 11:00 AM in the morning, so the Board was not aware that this was happening, nor the context of it. I was able to view a recording of it that the congressman had included on his social media page, and I was able to, you know, to listen to some of the comments, you know, and the concerns regarding hate and the interpretation of that. One thing I can say with certainty is that I was surprised in the conversation that, that, in the text, I should say, that Congressman Gottheimer had spoken. And again, I did read a press release that he wrote as well, but he speaks at the event, he states, whatever their names, whether it is from the right, like the Proud Boys or the Oath Keepers, or the groups inspired by the radical Antifa ideology on the extreme left, they're all justifying violence against their opponents. Again, it sounds like it would have been something that this Board would have liked to have been a part of. We appreciate the notification after, after the fact that it did happen, but what I would look forward to is perhaps, you know, inviting the congressman to have a dialogue with the Board, perhaps also with the District 24 legislators, specifically in regards to these issues and these challenges. But at this time, I'd like to read the following anti-hate resolution that has been submitted. Whereas those acting on hate generally do so, from a perceived superiority, ethnic, racial, or other, are certainty about a particular ideological or religious point of view. Examples include Pol Pot's exterminations of Cambodia, the Nazi Holocaust in Europe, and Soviet Holodomor, and Ukraine, and the Ottoman genocide in Armenia. Whereas history informs us that hate-motivated violence has often been made worse by the interventions of governments. Examples of this include the sectarian troubles in Northern Ireland, the ethnic conflicts in Rwanda, and the former Yugoslavia, the genocide in East Timor, and the ongoing genocide of Muslims in Myanmar, China. Whereas the word "hate" is deeply subjective, is a deeply subjective term, influenced by any number of cultural, socioeconomic, religious, and family influences. And whereas acts of violence against people or property are crimes defined by statute. And whereas the Federal Bureau of Investigation, FBI, defines a hate crime as a criminal offense against a person or property motivated in whole or in part by an offender's bias against race, religion, disability, sexual orientation, ethnicity, gender, or gender identity. And whereas not all crimes of violence fall within the FBI's definition of a hate crime, for example, the heinous terrorist attacks on September 11th, 2001, caused the deaths of 2,977 human beings are not counted as hate crimes by the FBI. And whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens of the state of New Jersey and this great nation to condemn, in the strongest terms, any hate crimes or any other crimes of hate, such as the attacks on September 11th, 2001, motivated by a perceived superiority, ethnic, racial, or other, or certainty about a particular ideological or religious point of view. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Sussex County, New Jersey, that one, the Board strongly condemns hate crimes or any other crimes of hate, such as terrorist attacks, like the attacks on September 11th, 2001, motivated by a perceived superiority, ethnic, racial, or other, or certainty about a particular ideological or religious point of view. In addition, this Board strongly recommends to all its constituents to abide by the timeless values expressed in the Golden Rule, Matthew 7:12, that we do unto others as we would have them do unto us. Two, governor and the Attorney General are encouraged to provide state assistance to victims of hate crimes and other crimes of hate, such as terrorist attacks, like the attacks on September 11th, 2001, and to enhance security measures and improve preparedness at locations that could be the targets of such crimes. Number three, copies of this resolution shall be transmitted by the clerk of the Board to the governor, the lieutenant governor, and the Attorney General, and to the leadership of both chambers of the New Jersey Legislature. So that is the resolution that has been shared with the public. We've received much feedback from individuals at our last meeting. Is, at this time, is there any input from any commissioner?
Director Fantasia, yes, Commissioner Carney. Just to kind of echo off what you said with Congressman Gottheimer, I wasn't able to attend the meeting myself yesterday, not to get too personal, but I did, I started work yesterday at 6:30. I haven't even been home yet, I worked last night, I worked today, so I haven't had time to review that, to watch that. I do, I want to, I would like to make a motion. I would like to table this for next month, and I ask all interested county residents, all parties, to submit written commentary on this resolution for the Board to consider. I ask that a vote take place after the Board has had time to read and consider the arguments made in writing, again, regarding this resolution. I've been here for three weeks, and this kind of got thrown in my lap, obviously, at my first meeting earlier this month. I would like to read the comments that people already have submitted, I know we get them daily, and like I said, with Congressman Gottheimer's conference yesterday at Sussex County Community, I would like to review that as well. And I'm not sure if you guys did, commissioners were able to attend it yourself, I know Dawn you said that you briefly attended, but I would like, I would like to put that on the floor, just to table this for next month and get a better feel for everything.
To clarify, no, I did not attend, we weren't notified until 36 minutes and three hours after the event took place, but I was able to go and view the speech that was given at the college this morning, I was able to take a look at it. But no, I don't, I don't believe any commissioner was actually in attendance. Is there any other feedback besides the request to table?
Dawn, I apologize, I thought you said that you were able to review it, I didn't think you attended, what I meant is that you were able to review it, my bad, my confusion.
Okay. Kevin, at this point, is this something that requires a vote to table, or how does this, how do we proceed with this?
With a vote, Dawn. A second, of course, assuming a second.
Is there any commissioner that seconds this?
Yes, Director, this, Sylvia will second.
Okay. Kerry, call the roll, please.
Sorry. Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to move on to new business, again, before we open up to public comment on these two. New business involves a resolution asking the legislature to assert itself and return to constitutional government. As we are aware, the governor has just entered us into the 11th month of rule via executive order. The certain members of the legislature have put up legislation to be voted on that would limit the governor's executive order powers to 14 days without legislative approval. This has been repeatedly blocked by the Democratic legislature to even bring that up for a vote. However, as we look across to our neighbors in New York, this actually just happened in New York to Governor Cuomo, where the courts did rule that the extended, quote, "emergency orders" could not be extended past 30 days without legislative approval, so New York is experiencing that, so New Jersey is on month 11 of that. So I'm not sure if that will spur any movement here, but I know that we have been in staunch support, this Board, of our District 24 legislators in order to move that legislation, because again, we have duly elected in this state 120 legislators, we have 40 senators, and we have 80 Assembly members. And we have seen situations like, for instance, the relief bill for the hospitality industry, we have seen this even, not by executive order, but we've seen this be vetoed when it was a full 100% unanimous vote by both sides bipartisan, by the governor, and many feel that the return to constitutional government, which allows the 120 bipartisan legislators to have a vote on so many of these orders, would be back in place. So this is actually a resolution that supports that, and I'd like to read that into the record. This is not a, anything that we're voting on tonight, this is not up for vote, this is the first time I'm bringing this to the table, but I'm bringing this just to read into the record for review and public comment. So it reads as such, whereas Governor Phil Murphy signed Executive Order Number 222 on February 17th, 2021, and whereas Executive Order Number 222 extends the public health emergency that was declared on March 9th, 2020, through Executive Order Number 103, which was previously extended in 2020, on April 7th, May 6th, June 4th, July 2nd, August 1st, August 27th, September 25th, October 24th, November 22nd, and December 21st, and again in 2021, on January 19th. And whereas, under the Emergency Health Powers Act, a declared public health emergency expires after 30 days unless renewed, and whereas Executive Order Number 222 extends all executive orders issued under the governor's authority under the Emergency Health Powers Act, it also extends all actions taken by any executive branch departments and agencies in response to the public health emergency presented by COVID-19 outbreak, and whereas the executive is designed to be just one of three co-equal branches of government in the state of New Jersey. And whereas this continued rule by executive order has undermined the representative legislature and denigrated the democratic process, and whereas the results of this rule by executive order are clear, have been injurious to the well-being of our state and its people, including over 7,000 deaths in nursing and veterans' homes attributable to Executive Order 103, the economic fallout from the closure of Main Street businesses, the loss of jobs and income without the creation of a temporary safety net to address the basic needs of the people, like food, housing, and healthcare, the effects of these executive orders on our God-given freedoms contained within the Bill of Rights. Be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Sussex County, New Jersey, that one, this Board asks that the governor sign no further extension of the Emergency Health Powers Act and immediately take steps to return the state to constitutional government and democratic ideals. Two, copies of this resolution shall be transmitted by the clerk of the Board to the governor, the lieutenant governor, the Attorney General, and to the leadership of both chambers of the New Jersey Legislature. So that's the draft of that resolution, and at this point, I would like to ask the Board if any commissioner would like to comment on that.
Dawn, this is Anthony, I'll just comment briefly, I appreciate you bringing this to the Board, I agree with everything that you just presented, and I hope we have the opportunity to vote on it at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you. Any other commentary from the Board?
None for me, Director Fantasia.
Thank you. All right, hearing no comment from the Board, at this time, we are going to open up an executive session for any comments in relation to number 19 and 20, which were the two resolutions and discussion that just took place before the Board. So again, as a reminder, if you do wish to speak and you are calling in from a telephone, you're to hit star six to unmute and give your name and municipality, and if you are on a digital device, be sure to find your name, and please just press the microphone icon with the red line through it to unmute yourself. We are going to take names in order. We're going to take names in order, we'll do a roster first, and then we will, we will call. Now, comments are limited to three minutes or less, so at this time, if you would like to speak on either of those resolutions, if you would unmute, and please state your name and municipality.
Mike Grabel, in Sparta.
Donna Mullen, Franklin.
Simone, John.
I'm sorry, caller, just please, just one moment, I'm taking this by hand, so Mike Graybell from Sparta?
Yes.
Okay, then the second caller, a female voice?
Donna Mullen from Franklin.
Donna Mullen from Franklin. Next caller?
Simone Jean from Byram.
Simone Jean from Byram, okay.
Heather Stott Mason from Sparta.
Heather Stott Mason from Sparta, yes.
Piano from Newton.
I'm sorry, what was, oh, Mifty Piano?
Yes, from Newton, and this is to speak on the resolutions, including the anti-hate resolution?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jamie Van Geiver from Paulsboro, New Jersey.
Paulsboro, New Jersey, Jamie Van Geizer?
Van, V-A-N, space, capital S, C-I-V-E-R, Van Geiver.
Thank you.
Kate Salerna, Sparta.
Kate Salerna, Sparta.
And again, I have a question, because I feel like, again, several people asked for you to clarify if there would be two points of public session regarding the old business as well as the new business, and I'm feeling, again, very much like this was a really calculated decision to table this so that we couldn't speak twice, are we going to be able?
No, what we're doing is doing this specifically for these, and then there will be open public session for any, any subject.
Okay, so there will be that second public session, just wanted to clarify.
Correct.
Okay, yep, add my name, please. Okay, yep, add my name, please.
Okay, I guess hearing no others.
Sally Gibson.
I'm sorry.
Sally.
Sally Gibson.
Yes.
Gibson, what is the municipality?
Frieden.
Frieden. All right, can I begin to call the roster then?
Uh, no, I'm seeing some direct messages here that are saying people are not able to unmute themselves. There's in, I think Amanda Riker, Josh Hertzberg. Yeah, they're muted for whatever reason. Um, and I'm not sure why they're not able to unmute, but I have like seven raised hands. Okay, now it says it's fixed. Okay, so I think you need to keep continuing taking the roster. There's more individuals to speak.
Thank you. It's Terry Corso from Stillwater.
Terry Corso, Stillwater. Yes?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lauren Jones Rabbit from Newton.
Lauren Jones Rabbit, Newton. Yes.
Uh, yes, Amir Osmanovic from Hamburg. Sorry, I could not mute myself.
Amir Osmadovic from Hamburg. All right.
Thank you.
Uh, Michael Schnackenberg, Newton.
Michael Schnackenberg, Newton.
Yes, Christoph Defo, Jersey City.
Christoph, what was the last name?
Defo, D as in David, I, F as in Frank, O, Gifo.
From, did you say Jersey City?
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anne Pompilio from Sparta.
Anne Pompilio, Sparta.
David Marovich, Vernon.
David Marovich from Vernon.
Kristi Levin, Hardeston.
Um, there was a little, uh, static there. Who, from Hardeston?
Sorry, uh, Kristi Levin, Hardeston.
Oh, okay, Kristi Levin. Okay.
Zoe Heath, Vernon.
Zoe Heath Vernon. Yes?
Katie Rotundy Hampton.
Katie Rotundy Hampton. Yep.
Brittany B. Andover.
Brittany B. Andover. Is that Andover Township or Borough? Brittany?
Just Andover's fine.
No, it's not. Please, I need to clarify the municipality. I've taken the last name of the A. Just for, it's a matter of the record, please. If you're not going to, I'll just write Andover. We'll move on.
Deborah Kaiser from Newton.
Scott Paul, Andover.
I'm sorry, Scott, what was the last name?
Paul, P-A-L.
From Andover?
Yep, Township.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it.
Michelle Van Allen, Hardeston Township.
Michelle Van Allen, Hardeston. Okay.
Josh Hertzberg, Sparta.
Nice to hear your voice, Josh.
You too.
Thank you. Next caller.
I understand. I got a message. Uh, Carl Lozaro is not able to unmute or is in the waiting room perhaps. There's also with raised hands, following people have raised hands. Amy Van Skiver, Sally, Lauren Jones Rabbit, who I heard that name, Michelle Van Allen I heard. Michael Schnackenberg I heard, Katie Rotundy I heard. There's an M. Herring with a hand raised and Alex Majewski with a hand raised.
Okay, um.
So I don't know if they can be unmuted or if there's an issue for the individuals that were not.
I'm muted now.
I can speak now. Thank you.
You just called my name, but I also gave mine already to be.
Yes, you're fine. Yes, thank you. Deborah Kaiser from Newton.
All right, Deborah, I had your name on the list. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know. Thank you so much.
Mr. Herring?
Yep, Jeff Herring, Newton.
Uh, Mr. Herring, what's the first name?
Jeff, J-E-F-F.
All right. Next caller. Is there any other callers after Mr. Herring?
Yes, do you have Alex Majewski from Newton?
Uh, now I do.
Do you have Carl Lozaro from Frieden?
Mr. Lozaro, Carl Lozaro, yes, I'm just hearing your. We thought you were, you were muted. So Carl Lozaro, um, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick comment.
Okay, are you one of the callers already on the list?
No, I'm not. But there seems to be some snide comments coming from the commissioners treating their callers like they don't have any respect.
This is not commentary time right now. If you wish.
Yes, it is because you're an elected, you're an elected official.
Sir.
And you chose to treat your callers.
Name down on the list if you wish to speak. We'd appreciate that.
If your name and municipality, you'll have your turn. Your name, please?
Tom Mohler.
I'm sorry, what?
Tom Mohler.
Tom Moore?
Mohler.
Okay, and Mr. Moore, the municipality?
Andover.
Township or Borough?
Township.
Thank you. Next caller.
Okay, hearing nobody else come forward, uh, the clerk is going to begin to call the roll. As a reminder, um, when speakers speak, they will not be interrupted by a commissioner nor another member of the public. If a member of the public cannot contain themselves or follow the rules that are set forth, they'll be removed from the meeting. Um, we ask for no commentary on other speakers', uh, speech and give them the respect and the three minutes that they are entitled to. So Terry, if you can begin.
Yes, our first caller is Mike Rydel from Sparta. Mike, are you there?
Uh, yes, that's Mike Vrabel, Vrabel. As like, like the football coach.
Sadly, that doesn't help me, but that's all right. Thank you, Mike.
All right.
Go ahead, start.
Okay, uh, first of all, I just want to thank, uh, the commissioners for allowing this forum. Uh, it's, uh, when we exercise our First Amendment rights, we're truly, uh, um, preserving our democracy, and I, I do appreciate that. Um, I, I believe with the, going with Resolution Number Nine, the hate resolution, I, I appreciate that we call out hate crimes. I think every, um, sentient conscience individual who, uh, who loves freedom, loves harmony in this nation, uh, can, uh, denounce hate crimes. However, there's an elephant in the room, or I guess I should say an elephant on Zoom. We're not in a room right now that, uh, we're not talking about this hate resolution. And I'm referring to the greatest threat, I think, to our democracy since the Civil War, which is the violent insurrection against our electoral process at the U.S. Capitol on January sixth. This was, uh, mentioned in the Vernon Resolution. The Vernon Resolution also mentions the history of, uh, racism, slavery, the terror of lynch mobs, and segregation, which leaves our country with important work to accomplish. And I, uh, quote that directly from their resolution. I believe that, yes, September eleventh was, was a horrible thing that was perpetrated by a foreign enemy. I, uh, I was a, I'm a former Air Force officer who, um, I was an aircraft commander, flying the Eighty-Second Airborne around for many years. Uh, I took an oath to the Constitution. I took an oath of office. And I was, I swore to protect the Constitution from all enemies, foreign and domestic. Domestic, the domestic enemies now are the threat. The FBI, the Justice Department lists white nationalists, rights, white supremacist groups as this greatest terrorist threat we face right now. And they've been proving that with the attack on the, um, attempted kidnapping of the Michigan governor and perpetra, and of course, the January sixth insurrection. Um, let me, let me talk a little bit about that. Um, the, uh, the commissioners, uh.
One minute.
Okay, the commissioners did comment on this. Um, the former chairwoman, Ms. Patello, uh, first exclaimed in the press that the rioters must have been Antifa. No Trump supporters would act like this. Subsequent statements disavowed the violence, uh, later on, uh, as did a statement that attributed to all the entire board, was attributed to the entire board. But first impressions are very telling, very revelatory. So I urge the, uh, the commission, I'm glad this was tabled. We need to take a, another look at this. Um, I think this silence on what is really happening in this country is, uh, is dangerous. Um, silence is complicity. So we have to mention what is going on and what the biggest threat is. It's, uh, the Proud Boys, the Oath Keepers, the Boogaloo Boys who want a race war, and the Three Percenters. Um, we have one individual from Sussex County. He owns a business.
Mr. Vrabel, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you for your comments. I'm going to move on to our next caller.
Thank you.
The next one is Donna Mullen from Franklin. Donna, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, Terry, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Um, I would just like to say thank you to Mike Vrabel for what you've just said. Um, I need to say that I feel going into a third month on this anti-hate resolution is appalling.
Okay, I'm done.
Um, I think the leading, as Mike said, white supremacy, white nationalists is horrible. I also think that tonight's, um, evidence of the board's sheer ignorance in waiting until two-twenty-four to acknowledge Black History Month indicates the position of the commission in representing their constituents. And it speaks volumes on partisan effects of Sussex County commissioners. I believe that you are elected by the county and you represent your constituents. Your constituents are the people of the county. I think that you need to look wholeheartedly at this. If you're going to indicate nine-eleven-oh-one in your statement of the anti-hate resolution, then you also need to indicate one-six-twenty-one, which at seventy-one years old was the most appalling thing I have ever witnessed in my life. I have lived in several states in this country. I have lived in several other counties of New Jersey. And I have never, ever, ever seen so much wish washing on this anti-hate resolution. I suggest you check the Sparta one, and I suggest you check the Vernon one. And wholeheartedly, I, I was not here when Howard Burrell was on the commission, but we need somebody like that on this commission who will speak for the constituents and speak for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our next caller is Simone Jean from Byram. Simone, are you there?
Yes, I am. And I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, but I also want to thank Mike, uh, Vabral, Vabral for his words. Um, I, first of all, I agree and wholeheartedly support Chrissy Levine's resolution. The idea that you want to leave out white nationalists, white supremacy is just appalling to, to me. And all the other stuff that you put in there, that was just kind of an insult and a slap in the face for many of us. Um, second of all, I have lived in Sussex County, uh, most of my life, since nineteen sixty-nine. Mostly in Augsburg. I grew up with two brothers, one having the same privilege as me being white and my other brother who was black. I have firsthand experience and accounts of the rampant racism that existed during my childhood, throughout my daughter's childhood, and seems to have only increased in the past four years with Trump's racist and otherwise bigoted remarks. I am grateful that not all my childhood friends were racist. And I am grateful that I bought a house in Lake Mohawk where I have met new neighbors and friends who are not racist. But racism is still a significant problem and a dark blemish that needs to be eradicated in our community in order to improve the quality of life for all of us who reside here. And the best act that this board could have taken is to pass Christie Levine's resolution against hate and white supremacy. Because of the lasting effects of racism my family endured in Sussex County, I dedicated most of my life's activism to fighting as an ally of black lives against systemic and ingrained racism and especially police brutality. I never thought I would ever see a Black Lives Matter protest in Sussex County, but there were many, and it made my heart cry with joy and pride, especially for those who made the courage to organize them. Your reluctance to include white nationalist supremacy, it's just such a slap.
One minute.
In the face. But you are elected officials and we, the people, all those that are keep coming to these meetings are going to keep growing and we are going to keep demanding better. I, I just, I don't understand how you can continue to, to do what you're doing. But I hope that you will listen to all of us. I hope that you will listen to the people and do better. Because that resolution that you put forth is unjust, unfactual. It's absurd. Um, thank you for your time and have a good night.
Thank you. Our next caller is Heather Stack Mason from Sparta.
Yes, thank you. First of all, Simone, I love you. Um, I just have two things that I wanted to go over. Um, the first is from a scientific standpoint, the Sussex County drop in COVID numbers, they cannot be attributed to something like herd immunity. And I've not read any peer-reviewed materials that support that claim. People are still at risk, especially those that are immunocompromised. We do not have a high enough percentage.
Ma'am, excuse me, this, this, uh, public session is for the two resolutions. We have open public session at the end.
Fine, here we go then. I'm disturbed that there has been no formal condemnation of right-wing extremism and domestic terrorism. And I'm even more disturbed by a weak attempt by members of the board to silence the constituents and table discussions. This isn't a complex issue that requires dissertations from the public. What happened on January the sixth was the work of far-right extremists and putting out a statement that really only addresses September the eleventh, two thousand and one, is a disappointing response. You need to address what is a significant threat and concern for not only New Jersey, but Sussex County. I've read multiple statements, including from the FBI, that clearly state right-wing, white supremacist groups are a serious threat and concern. So I'm wondering what the hesitation is for all of you not to be calling out groups like the Proud Boys and Oath Keepers, the people who stormed our Capitol, because they believed that their political views were superior to the majority that voted for a new administration. If you're not speaking out against them, then you're complicit and you're part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Micty Piano from Newton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
There is no reason white supremacy in the resolution, uh, should be removed and numerous reasons to include it. The last meeting, Don gave false misleading information. She made an act of graffiti to each other as well as shots heard in the share shot of top, despite the official saying otherwise. This painted a false and leading picture that was used to justify changing the resolution. What we are left with after the facts were made clear, active graffiti. Speaking of active graffiti, a supporter of Josh Gottheimer's house was attacked twice. Once with swastikas and then again with anti-Semitic against the board. Mayor Ryan, everyone, that's a hate symbol and a hate crime in the family in our county. Speaking of spraying with swastikas, remember the time they were on the Sussex County Airport bar? Or anti-Semitic hate speech in the bathrooms of High Point High School where the Nazi, where the Nazi imagery that sent to Jewish residents in Green Township was that an alt-right hate group was distributing propaganda in Franklin? Now, I ask if you remember, but I do not believe the commissioners or the supporters do from these incidents. The commissioners certainly weren't able to remember Holocaust Memorial Day, and I had to use my time to hold the moment of silence. Someone said the commissioners standing against hate by, and for honorary pictures of it. Here are more things that you have forgotten and why we need to announce widespread things in our country. The Sussex County Republican Committee Twitter page was filled with offensive comments, including a call to eradicate Islam. Yet this was defended and ignored by Jerry Scallion and the county, the county party chair since two thousand and fifteen. Also disappointing, serving as vice chairman on Sussex County Community College. Palada refused to announce extremist group known as the Oath Keepers, though when Garrett was caught with them, he did. So we went from act- So we went from accidentally working with hate groups, extremist groups, to purposely working with them in a matter of two years. Now, the Oath Keepers is considered a homegrown domestic terrorism group in New Jersey. It is a militant group, and F L C P consider it one of the largest radical anti-government groups in the U.S. today. In 2019, two ministers in the county were arrested, who had stockpiled weapons, including illegal ones, had loads of extremists and neo-Nazi propaganda, and threats of violence. We even had someone arrested in the county for participating in the insurrection.
One minute.
In 2014, 2015, our very own David Bryson became radicalized and again sharing extremist and xenophobic propaganda. This was a person who, as before his resolution, David's my friend. Steve began radicalizing thousands of young people and tried to start a cult as a spell, as well as espousing dangerous conspiracies that have only become more prevalent. Last year, the commissioners, especially Tepel, were condemned for putting on anti-LGBTQ comments in resolution. That was after 2017, when the Sussex GOP sent out an anti-LGBTQ flyer, which happened after 2015, when the NJ Republican Party condemned Garrett for homophobia, all except for Sussex County Republicans, that is. This is extremism and hate. The commissioners say they stand against hate and the extreme vote condemn it, they won't name it, and they want to address the issue here in our county. Heck, they reported not even to attend this symposium on the topic to get the tools and knowledge to combat it. The county government has done nothing to solve this issue, may even be contributing to it. The original resolution needed passed, but passing the resolution isn't enough. We must then take action to combat this issue, educate people, and help de-radicalize those with xenophobic views. Thank you.
Just in time, Nick. Thank you. Our next caller is Jamie Van Skyver from Paulsboro.
Yes, good evening. Looking at the agenda, and I heard someone read something earlier, speaking on, you know, racism and Black History Month. Black Lives Do Matter. I don't know why you would be doing this when there's four days left in the month. I agree with someone's statement earlier that it seems a little bit too little, too And it sounded like a Sunshine and Rainbows book report, what's happening across the country and hold hands across the nation? When something is going on in your community, you don't even speak of it and you table it, and now you're cutting down people's time to speak on the matter? That's pretty disgusting. Don't worry what's going on across the nation. Focus on what's going on in your neighborhood, and it's not hard to determine right from wrong. And if you think that you need to protect yourself and consult law or doing whatever that you're doing, then what you're thinking of doing is not right. Do the right thing. What's the matter with you? I'm done until I'm done ready to speak on public comment about medical cannabis.
All right, we move on to our next caller, Kate Salerina from Sparta.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, Kate, please start.
I'm here to speak in support of the resolution to condemn hate and white supremacy in our community in the form and language it was originally presented to our commissioners. I also want to take a moment to thank those of you who are on this call tonight in support of our bipartisan resolution, and for everyone who has been helping to get the word out and supporting this movement in any way. It means more than I could possibly express, and I am really looking forward to great things to come. I would like to note to, to the commissioners that after assuring us you would post your resolution online so that we might review, edit, and contact you in regards to it, that seemingly did not happen till today. That said, I was initially encouraged by the commissioner's last-minute decision to finally speak on the topic of our resolution this past meeting, a feeling that was immediately derailed by Director Fantasia's rebuttal and lengthy confusing resolution, wherein she cited references to examples of unrest in other countries and made vague allusions to the necessity to include other hate groups without ever actually naming what groups she was referring to. To quote Director Fantasia, "The only thing stronger than willful ignorance is the truth." So let's talk about the truth with a quote from Director Fantasia's response to public commentary after approximately 20 community, community members spoke out in support of the resolution. Quote, "Ten shots fired at the head of our law enforcement in this county. Ten shots fired at the home. Three individuals arrested on two separate days. One turned himself in and affiliated with a specific group. To me, to shoot bullets at someone's house with their children in the home, I don't have any words for that. But if that's not hate to you, I don't know what is." Ms. Fantasia has since gone to great lengths to walk back her initial comments regarding arrests from last year. Interestingly, she has yet to acknowledge that neither of the two individuals arrested after the terms BLM and Antifa were spray painted on signs ever claimed to associate with a specific group. She has also not clarified that those incidents were determined to have no connection to the alleged incident involving the county sheriff, wherein an individual called to report was sounded like gunshots in the vicinity of Sheriff's, Sheriff Stroud's home. An extensive investigation and search that included the use of helicopters to date has discovered zero physical evidence, no shell cases found, found anywhere in the vicinity, and no damage caused by bullets to the home. corroborate the claim that shots were fired.
One minute.
So while it is true that the Herald was incorrect in claiming that this board explicitly requested BLM be included in the resolution, one has to consider, given the amount of times this board has brought up the Black Lives Matter movement in an effort to discredit it, that it might be fair for anyone to assume that BLM is most likely at least one of the groups that these commissioners are referring to without merit. The irrefutable true, truth is that the Black Lives Matter demonstrations that Sussex County witnessed last year were entirely peaceful. Conversely, you have been given real verifiable examples of bias and hate from within and beyond our community, and yet your quote, "resolution" does not once specifically condemn the most recent domestic terrorist events of, of January 6th, despite the massive public outcry you have received, begging you to unequivocally do so in bipartisan fashion. So I ask you again, do we disagree on this? Quote, "Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Chosen Commissioners of Sussex County, white nationalists, white supremacists, neo-Naxis, and any other hate groups and individuals whose ideologies are based on hate, violence, discord, and intolerance, are rejected and condemned."
Time is up, Salerina. Thank you for your comments. Our next caller is Sally Gibson from Freedon.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Ms. Gibson.
Oh, good. Thank you. I just want to say, wow, I am so impressed with the speakers this evening. It is making my heart go pitter-patter. I feel like there is my tribe, speaking out the way we must. I want to say, there's, I wish I could be as powerful as the speakers we've had, but they're there, and I take heart. What I want to add is that it is, your, the resolution that has been presented by the commissioners is an insult to me, as a long-term Sussex County person, dealing with racism on a regular basis. I want to say to you that I have felt threatened, and that I have felt threatened. End of that sentence. What I want to say then is that resolutions can be very helpful and relevant to people in this county. But when you, as the first gentleman said, leave it, leave out the main subject, and it is the elephant in the room, you are winking to that population that needs to hear this resolution. And that's why this resolution needs to pass, as Christie Levine has worded it. I urge you to do that. I urge you to take a look at what this county needs to do to improve relations before there are further incidents that could be threatening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Okay, our next caller is Terry Corso from Stillwater. Terry, are you there?
I am here. Thank you very much for listening. First of all, I want to thank you to all those commissioners for your service to Sussex County tonight. This is my first time on, and I've heard so much good that you do, and I want you to hold on to that, because you are the people who represent this county. And I believe that you have an inherent willingness to serve and represent all your constituents. And that's not an easy job. It's absolutely not. But to that end, I want to point out the obvious, like others have said, all of these commissioners, at least as I can see you, and that's a judgment, are probably people of white. And it's so difficult to such, and I am also a person of white. It's so difficult as such to understand those who you represent who are people of color. While you might believe that you don't need to understand these constituents, such as you might not need to understand deeply another marginalized group, I would ask you to reconsider that thought. I think it's critical for you to hear and listen deeply to those who have a voice tonight about this resolution. Commissioner Carney, I applaud you. I think it's really important to table this, but to table it with something else in mind. And to that end, I'm going to suggest something that we might be able to do as a community. And I hope you will listen to this and consider this very, very seriously. And, and that is, would you be willing to convene focus groups or groups of people who are seriously willing to listen to one another about this resolution? And it, and it's a cross-section of your.
One minute.
Thank you. Without deeply listening and deeply understanding, commissioners cannot possibly create a resolution that represents us all. We're not Democrats, Republicans, independents, progressives. We are you. You are the commissioners who represent us. I'm going to ask you to think about that deeply. Commissioner Carney, I hope that you are a person who would lead this kind of charge and ask your fellow commissioners not to do their resolution based on your own experiences, but deeply listening to people of color. Thank you so much, and that's the end of my comments.
Okay, thank you. Our next caller is Lauren Jones-Rabbit from Newton. Lauren, are you there?
Hi, I'm sorry, I just wouldn't unmute. I'm Director of Education at the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Sussex County. As, as an advocate for children, I feel called to elucidate the narrative around the Black Lives Matter movement, both broadly and locally here in Sussex County, which has overwhelmingly and statistically been life-affirming, community-building, and culturally unifying. In all of the seven events here in Sussex County this summer, youth voices were amplified, and I had the privilege of listening to children who are also people of color speak about their experiences with racism within our schools in particular. They read poems about these experiences, they courageously told their stories of everyday heartbreak, of white adults not understanding their experience, because many don't understand what individual versus systemic, overt versus covert, implicit bias even is, and mainly because they don't live in black and brown bodies. They told stories of racist bullying and harassment. These were beautiful events where intentions on learning about the history of white supremacy in our state and county were made in order to heal land that holds untold stories of inequity. They worked to make plain the legacies of pain that living children still face due to history's interplay in systems of power and governance. Together, these children sang, made art, lit candles, danced, and committed to learning to extract white supremacy from their hearts. All of us are its victims. Sadly, instead of relying on this truth about BLM when deciding on an anti-hate resolution, I have witnessed commissioners here continued and deliberate creation of false narrative around what hate is pertaining to race, going so far as to use irrelevant conclusion and fallacy by stringing together so far unrelated and unsubstantiated events to encourage division and uphold a dangerous storyline of a post-racial world where the legacies of whiteness don't need examining. White supremacy is a problem in Sussex County. My own church building historically housed the KKK. We have largely so far failed to reckon with the ripples of these hidden truths. This summer, out of the mouths of B I P O C children and their allies, came the everyday horrific stories of racism, still blatantly underexamined in the systems that are supposed to serve them. If party goes unacknowledged because of the discomfort of recognizing its reality and learning something new, of deconstructing our own epistemological experiences and placing ourselves within the context of whole history. Those in positions of power have the obligation to check their personal ideological positing if it's creating bifurcation and polarization in the community. And if they're failing to admit that they might not know everything about a subject here as it pertains to white supremacy, they can ask experts, examine the empirical evidence, and most importantly, listen to the children who are experiencing it. The overarching problem that needs called by its name is the problem of who gets to write the history of what racism is. It is crucial for people in positions of power and institutions that have historically been or are still mostly white to be open to learning, listening, and deconstructing outdated and dangerous frameworks, not encouraging them. I have used the teaching of Jesus in the Gnostic Gospel.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
We move on to our next caller, who is Amir Armalovich from Hamburg.
Close enough, Amir Smadovic from Hamburg. But I, I thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. So a few things that I've noticed at this, reading this resolution for anti-hate, was the mentioning of various extermination camps set up in Cambodia, the Nazi Holocaust in Europe, the Holodomor in Ukraine, the Ottoman genocide in Armenia, the Rwanda genocide in 95, a former Yugoslavian genocide in East Timor, and so on and so forth. I don't think that currently in my, in my standing, I would do any of the victims' justice if I blatantly just paint this as a hate crime. The, the historical events that you have mentioned in your resolutions are probably hundreds and hundreds of years of, of history, and something that various intellectuals and psychologists have dedicated their lives in studying. Myself included being, when I deployed to Afghanistan, in my free time, I've read at least four books about the, the Pol Pot's regime in Cambodia, as well as the firsthand accounts in Rwanda from, from survivors, as well as historical and political reasoning why it got to there. Now, to fast forward to the United States, none of these things is in the United States. None of these have been perpetuated by the, by the members of domestic terrorist organizations. One can say that the Pol Pot's exterminations in Cambodia were mostly towards anti-intellectuals. And, and it could be, it could be said that the next door, the Vietnam War, has brought up a lot of these conflicts, especially with the United States bombing of Cambodia and Laos, where more ordinance has been dropped in those two areas than in Dresden or in the whole conflict of World War II.
One minute.
Same thing, that, that kind of just threw me off a little bit, I apologize.
Sorry.
But, no, there's, no, it's okay. There's some things that you could involve in this, and this is in no, in no order, but these are the things that happened in the United States. Rock Springs massacre, Thibodeau massacre, Spring Valley Race Riot, Phoenix Election Riot, Willy, Wilmington Insurrection, Pana Riot, Robert Charles Riot, Evansville Riot, Tulsa Race Massacre, Perry Race Riot, Fort Pillow Massacre, 1912 racial conflict in Forsyth County, Atlanta Massacre of 1906, Springfield Race Riot of 1908. You don't have to go overseas to find hate. At times, it's right next door. As somebody that has survived the Yugoslavian conflict in 1990s and have come to the United States, I kind of looked at this resolution as a broad brush of.
I'm sorry, your time is up, but thank you for your remark. I need to move on to our next caller, Michael Schnackberger. Thank you. Michael Schnackberger from, Schnackberg from Newton.
Their name is Schnackenberg, you keep mispronouncing it. Good evening.
I'm sorry, my, my audio here gets a little blurred with the loud commentary. I do my best. Thank you, you can begin now.
Thank you. Tonight, the board once again is doubling down on their refusal to call out the nucleus of a problem we are facing as a nation: white nationalism, white supremacy, and anti-democracy radicalism. The Item 19 proposed resolution seems to have hit all of the dog whistles it can to turn this issue into a partisan push for, for their view of what's right, and into a show of political theater in order to defend radical right-wingers, both elected and unelected. 9/11, once again, is being used and abused by the Republican Party as a tool of their political agenda on full display. The resolution looks to bring 9/11 into this conversation for what purpose? Those events were a despicable act that cost thousands of Americans and others their lives that we still feel the pain of today. I should not be surprised, however, this is Sussex GOP messaging 101, lest we forget the anti-sanctuary state resolution that was pushed by the same board, as well as our assembly members. My favorite was the How Works online ad in 2019 that blamed 9/11 on illegal aliens. 9/11 was the result of terrorists from Middle Eastern nations who lived in this country legally and were funded in large part by Saudi Arabia. Illegal aliens and immigration status had nothing to do with that fateful day. The outright lies of the GOP in a flag-waving attempt to fool the residents of Sussex County while they hide behind fake patriotism is disgusting. If you truly cared, if you truly cared about the victims and their families, you wouldn't use 9/11 in every argument you feel you're losing. The fact that elected officials have to be reminded like children in a classroom to stay on task is pathetic. Just admit the truth, you are afraid to call out this extremism because you are in bed with them. Your disrespect for the tragedy that was 9/11 by making it a constant political prop is abhorrent and ridiculous, but never surprising. The people of Sussex. The people of Sussex County are not as stupid as you think. They will see right through your attempts to politicize not only that tragedy, but this failure to once again act as well. Shame on this board. Pass Kristi Lavin's resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Kristoff Defoe from Jersey City.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name is Kristoff Defoe, and in many ways, I'm just like you. My family settled in northwestern New Jersey in the 18th century. My grandfather fought in World War II. I'm an American citizen. I'm married to a beautiful woman named Lindsay. I'm a lawyer, a homeowner, a New York Giants fan. I've got two cats at home, and I should probably get more exercise than I do. I'm also a black man living in America, though. Shortly after the 2016 election, I was assaulted and called the N-word outside of a New Jersey bar. I quit playing men's league hockey in 2017 after I was assaulted explicitly due to my race. Those dangerous encounters are rare in comparison to subtle indignities I've shrugged off over the course of my life, like the time someone replied, "Oh, wow, a black lawyer," when I revealed my profession at a birthday party in 2014. I doubt that many of the council members have been physically assaulted because of the color of their skin, and I doubt also that they have frequently had their credentials questioned because of the color of their skin. You see, in those ways, you and I are not alike. Like my grandfather, who faced racial discrimination when he returned to the United States after fighting fascists in Europe, I'm engaged in an ongoing struggle to be included in America's promise of universal justice. Black Lives Matter gives voice to that struggle. The organization describes itself as, quote, "an inclusive and spacious movement that must move beyond the narrow nationalism that is all too prevalent in black communities to build a movement that brings all of us to the front." A recent Harvard study shows that 96.3% of Black Lives Matter demonstrations involve no property damage or police injuries, and in 97.7% of events, there were no injuries at all. On the other hand, The Proud Boys is a far-right neo-fascist, male-only, white nationalist organization that promotes and engages in political violence. They describe themselves as, quote, "Western chauvinists" who, quote, "refuse to apologize for creating the modern world." Its participants espouse all manner of bigotry while making allies with white supremacists.
One minute.
In fact, the notorious neo-Nazi march in Charlottesville was organized by a Proud Boy member. Proud Boys played a prominent role in the violent insurrection on January 6th as well. Surely, you're all smart enough to understand the distinction here. Black Lives Matter is a broad, inclusionary movement committed to an America in which everyone has a seat at the table, regardless of their race, gender, or religion. Black Lives Matter is not about black supremacy, it's about eliminating race-based supremacy altogether. The Proud Boys, on the other hand, are explicitly in the exclusion business. The KKK built its identity around violent reaction to the 20th-century civil rights movement, the movement that finally guaranteed my grandfather's right to vote, and likewise, neo-fascists like The Proud Boys and the Oath Keepers have built their identity around violent reaction to the 21st-century civil rights movement, the movement which seeks to end race-based supremacy once and for all. I urge this council to unambiguously condemn neo-fascism, so that you can spare your grandchildren the embarrassment of explaining why your ancestors were obviously on the wrong side of history.
Our next caller is Anne Pompilio from Sparta. Anne, are you there?
I am, thank you. Anne Pompilio from Sparta.
Yes.
Words matter. Why is this board so reluctant to pass the resolution by Kristi Lavin? Her words were powerful, they spoke to what needs to be stated, and they would inure to the benefit of our county. The proposed resolution from the board includes mention of 9/11 as an act of hate, and it was. It was perpetrated, however, by foreign terrorists. If that is included, as are so many other incidents of hate in Commissioner Fantasia's proposed resolution, I continue to be perplexed as to why this board is so reluctant to call out the elephant in the room, as stated by Mike Frabel. The elephant in this room, and what is so glaringly absent in the board's proposed resolution regarding a repudiation of hate, is inclusion of the insurrection attack on our nation's Capitol on January 6, 2021, an insurrection by Americans, not by foreigners. Those insurrectionists chanting "Hang Mike Pence" were motivated by hate. They erected gallows with a noose for him. The insurrectionists sporting clothing supporting the Holocaust were motivated by hate. The insurrectionists who beat up and tortured police officers in the Capitol and killed a police officer were motivated by hate. White nationalists and white supremacists are a grave threat to our nation. They are motivated by hate, and they must be denounced strongly by all of our elected officials. Why is this board consistently refusing to include a repudiation of white supremacy and white nationalists? On another note, the resolution regarding black history is appreciated. The explanation of why the resolution to honor Black History Month in February was set for today, February 24, instead of earlier, was unconvincing. Passing this Black History Resolution with only four days left in the month is seen by many as something that is not really considered very important by this group, that being Black History Month. I respectfully suggest to this fine board of people who really, I truly believe, do their best to do the best for us, I suggest that next year and in years going forward, that this board introduce a resolution regarding Black History Month in a timely manner. It will mean so much for so many people. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is David Makovich from Vernon.
Hi, thank you. Outstanding resolution on a return to constitutional government. It's brave and honest, and our founding fathers would be proud. I'll speak in support of the rewording and condemn the original wording of what the so-called hate resolution is, and I think with good evidence of the nastiness and disrespect that many of these speakers have shown the commission is indicative of where this so-called resolution comes from. Now, we in the county are behind you with your revision of this original statement. I mean, a lot of these speakers are manufactured and come from outside the county, but we're watching you being pushed in the corner and led into a trap. Allow me to remind you of a quote from Winston Churchill relative to this hate resolution: "You cannot reason with a tiger when your head is in its mouth." You cannot reason with a tiger when your head is in its mouth. And he was talking about Hitler. Of all the good you're doing in this county means nothing to these extremists who are spewing venom at you and making a straw man exercise out of a hate resolution. Conceding on this so-called resolution is just encouraging this attempt of fake moral outrage, which is a part of a larger effort by the Democrat Party to create conflict in the county by fabricating made-up stories. And in the case of one educator who I heard speak, actual racism against white people. I mean, my whiteness is racist? I mean, come on, that's nuts. Over-proclaiming white racism while minimizing Marxist terrorism like the BLM riots and the Antifa riots and the masses of people who were beaten and killed and the businesses that were burned in the past few years is an example of sectarian purges occur. And if the county commissioners get wise to this, these political artists will find ways to sue, create false investigations, and otherwise distract and disrupt all the good business the county is doing. This sectarian rule is when the party in power sabotages the opposition, and this is what the far-left extremists that we've just heard are doing. I suggest we stop giving them this attention anymore. They cancel us, they cancel us at work. If I were to express this opinion at work, I'd get fired. They cancel us at work, they cancel our businesses. I say retaliate with the same cancel culture, because nothing you give them or concede them is going to do anything.
One minute.
They hate us, like this Capitol insurrection, the greatest threat. The greatest threat is they're trying to overthrow the Constitution by eliminating individual rights. Our cities burned from BLM and Antifa riots, and good people were prosecuted for defending their lives and property. It's okay when the middle class and honest citizens are targeted by Marxist-run riots, but then they're so desperate to condemn any perceived counterattack on themselves. You know, in terms of hate, a quick search of most Sussex Democrats' public profiles shows that they're hate Christianity. They call Catholics derogatory names, they insult the name of Jesus Christ with bigotry and degradation. Their false outrage at manufactured slights, this is a calculated effort to try to intimidate the county commission that represents the county as a whole. And like I said, a lot of these people aren't even from the county. The world they want is dystopia. They pretend grand walk compassion and claim all kinds of artificial victimhood, but in reality, this is a disguise for their acceptance of the worst and most despicable practices. They're going to give us-
I'm sorry, your time is up. Your time is up, thanks very much. I need to move on to the next caller, who is Kristi Lavin from Hartston.
I am here, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to first thank Commissioner Carney. Thank you for being willing to listen to us and consider what we have to say. I really appreciate that. I may not always agree with the actions of this board, but I've always addressed you with respect. When close to a month ago this all began, I proposed the idea of an anti-hate resolution. It was done so with the intent to condemn hate and tolerance, as well as condemning racism in our community. I did not ask for just racism to be considered, but all hate groups and individuals that incite hatred. I could not think of an easier, more nonpartisan thing to unite us all. I may be naive or idealistic when I take people's words at face value, but when Commissioner Fantasia indicated that we're all on equal standing, I appreciated that. I took that to mean that regardless of who you are, you would be listened to, and your ideas and thoughts would be considered. I asked you to keep the language of condemnation of white supremacy, white nationalism, and neo-Nazis in your resolution, because it's relevant to our county, relevant to the residents calling in during their experiences of racism, and relevant to the rise in racial hate crimes we have had in the past few years in New Jersey and in our county. Can I interrupt for a minute? It sounds like there's background noise, Ms. Lyons. You hear that?
Honestly, I do not hear it from my phone. If you're on a computer, I don't know. Let's please continue.
Commissioner Patillo is not muted, that's where it's been coming from.
Mm-hmm. Right.
I'm sorry. May I continue? Okay. Hold on. Let me just-
I'm sorry, Ms. Lavin, hold on just one sec. This is Commissioner Fantasia. I just want to look at the participants and make sure, because I'm hearing it too. You're not wrong.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Deborah Kaiser, I'm muting Deborah Kaiser, I'm muting Disco Donna. I'm just saying the usernames, I'm not trying to be cute here. Sorry. Those are the only individuals I see. See Kristi, I see Michelle Van Allen is also unmuted, so I'm muting her.
I just unmuted to tell you that it's coming from Sylvia's phone.
Okay, hold on just one sec. Sylvia, can you please mute your phone? It is, you're right, because I see the green. So Commissioner Patillo, are you able to mute, or can we-
Yeah, I'm here, sure, I'll mute. I don't know what to do, because I'm just hitting here, but hold on, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just one sec, I want you to have your full time.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry, okay, go ahead.
So, naming the Ukraine and the Ottoman or any other horrific, granted horrific, foreign genocide speaks to tragedy, but it doesn't necessarily speak to what's happening in our county right now, or the residents suffering in our county, and that's really, you know, the focus of what you guys are doing in your jobs. And I've come to learn that, you know, to trust actions over words despite being inclined to give people the benefit of the doubt. So, I really felt that this is an opportunity for us, for us all, to show unity and strength of character, and for you as leaders to demonstrate an example to the factions that do exist in our county where you stand. In multiple meetings, you were really asked to take a stand by people of our county that came to you, sharing their own personal experiences with racism. You were asked by people that provided you statistics and data relevant to Sussex County explaining why it's necessary and why it would be helpful to our community, and you were asked because it really is the right thing to do. An omission of white supremacy would be deeply unfortunate for many of the reasons that I just mentioned, and I'm asking you to take a stand for the people of color in our county. So, ultimately, it's your job as county commissioners to represent all of your constituents, regardless of race, creed, religion, or political affiliation. So, I'm truly coming to you on a win and a prayer here, hoping that what Commissioner Carney said, that he was being sincere, and that all of you are sincerely considering that the people here, that, I mean, how many are here? Seventy-eight now, but there was over eighty, that they're taking time out of their lives to come and speak, and that you're really considering what we have to say.
One minute.
And that you'll consider it. You already put something together, and I get that, but that you'll really consider what we have to say and maybe consider altering the language. Thank you.
Our next caller is Zoe Heath from Vernon.
Thank you. All of the speakers tonight, or most of them, have been incredibly articulate and brought up really important points about this resolution. I agree that I think this is just talking about a terrorist attack for the sake of talking about a terrorist attack, so we could ignore the fact that our commissioners openly work with and associate themselves with white supremacists in Sussex County. At the end of the day, our commissioners were asked, "Hey, condemn white supremacy, please," and said no. We set the bar very, very low in terms of what we asked our elected officials to do and how they could represent everyone in Sussex County, not just the Sussex County GOP and their voting base, and we said, "Please condemn white supremacy and a domestic terrorist attack on our nation's Capitol." And we said no. And it's just really, really unfortunate that in this resolution that talks about what hate crime is, by definition, is not 9/11, even though it was an act that came from hate, but hate crimes happen in Sussex County all the time. A hate crime is the Sussex Airport diner being vandalized with swastikas. A hate crime is a student at Sparta High School having her hijab ripped off in the hallway. A hate crime is homes of supporters of Congressman Josh Gahnheimer being vandalized with swastikas. Those are hate crimes. A hate crime is not just something inconveniencing that happens to me because I don't like it. A hate crime isn't someone talking about me on Facebook or an elected official using my personal content for a political point. That's not a hate crime. Did I enjoy it? Absolutely not. Could say I hated it. Doesn't make it a hate crime. We really simply asked our officials to condemn white supremacy, which we can all agree is hatred, but they won't condemn white supremacy and hatred because they know that the white supremacist base in Sussex County actively works for them and keeps them in office. I'm glad you guys are tabling this resolution, because it does give you the opportunity to correct these mistakes-
One minute.
-them white supremacy, but I hate to say, I doubt you will. I doubt you'll correct your mistakes, because you'll lose votes for it in the primary. Thank you.
All right, our next caller is Katie Rotandi from Hampton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Katie, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say that I think it's important that a lot of time is being spent because of how important this is, but unfortunately, I think a lot of the time being spent on this is being spent on it for the wrong reasons, and that there's no reason that Kristi Lavin's proposal and resolution shouldn't have been approved. There's no reason for all of this. I do appreciate Commissioner Carney wanting to have more of the information, but ultimately, this is a no-brainer, and it's, I wish it was surprising that we're here again, almost two years later, talking about hate and having the commissioners honestly not even understand what hate is or what a hate crime is. And I just have a direct question that I would like answered after the public comments, and I want to know if the reason the commissioner board is not passing Kristi Lavin's resolution that has the support of the public, if it's because it condemns white supremacy and the attack on the Capitol on January 6th that was led by Oath Keepers, when they worked directly with someone with strong affiliations to being an Oath Keeper, on their website, on their Facebook, and is actually, Commissioner Carney and Commissioner Fantasia are actually running on the same ticket as William Hayden, who's the three-percenter up here, affiliated with the Oath Keepers and running for the state male GOP seat. So I would like to know, is that the reason that you're not doing it, because you're running with them? Or is it something else? Because at the George Floyd vigil, yes, Commissioner Patillo and Commissioner Fantasia came, but they stood with William Hayden and the counter protesters. We have a photo of it, and we had to ask Commissioner Patillo to put a mask on.
One minute.
We're beyond every, beyond the pale here in Sussex County. The AG came here specifically about bias crimes, because of the problems we have here. This commissioner board is the problem if you're working with Oath Keepers, so please just let us know. the problem, if you're working with Oath Keepers. So please, just let us know. Is that the reason that you won't specifically condemn, because you work with William Hayden, and he's on the same ticket as you, and he's a three percenter and an Oath Keeper? Please just let us know. That would answer a lot of questions. Thank you.
Our next caller is Brittany B. from simply Andover.
So I have some questions and thoughts on the resolution. For one, were any people of color, specifically black people, involved in drafting of this resolution? Also, it's weird how you talk about government involvement elsewhere and not mention US involvement in foreign affairs as occurring to this day. Also, 9/11 was a tragedy. You mentioned the numbers of people who were killed, but you did not mention the hundreds of thousands of civilians who were killed overseas since this war of terror, war on terror was raised. You quote the Bible. Why? Have you heard of the separation of church and state? Also, why do you keep bringing up terrorist attacks and as hate crimes without mention of police brutality and blatant hate speech against black people? Why do you not mention black people at all? Have you heard of Sandra Bland? Have you heard of Emmett Till? Also, do you know whose land we are living on right now? The people who were slaughtered, whose likeness you now use as a mascot, and call yourselves brave? Are you aware of how racist this resolution is, and offensive to marginalized people, and people who actually care about justice? You are doing nothing. This does nothing. Focus groups are the least you can do. I am a black woman who was born and raised in this county, but I cannot call this place my home. Not when I open my mouth to ask for justice and get called a tiger by people who have not even heard how loud I can roar. That's all I have to say. Please let me know when you have the focus group, if you decide to hear our voices.
Thank you for your comments. Our next caller is Deborah Kaiser from Newton.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Deborah. Go ahead.
Okay. I gave this resolution, I kind of cut out who did it, and I gave it to a friend of mine, who lives in Morris County. And I asked her what she thought of it. And she wanted to know if that was a project, assignment, that somebody had to write, school, high school or junior high student had to write as a resolution after 9/11. This resolution that you all have drafted is a complete embarrassment to Sussex County. I have only lived here for a short period of time. I have seen what white supremacy does. My family has tasted it firsthand. It is terrible that you think that your opinions, for whatever reason, these opinions that you've put down are somewhat about hate. Because with the few things you redirected, you know, people that redirect to another country or another subject, it's a way of disguising what you will not say. And unfortunately for all of you, you have a lot of really intelligent constituents, who are not only well-educated, but they know what racism is. And unfortunately, I will say that the way this is worded, I feel that there is part of this board, or all of this board, that is racist. And you will not speak up against what happened in Washington DC at our Capitol. Oh, and what about Blue Lives Matter? You went on about, oh, the sheriff apparently having his house. No, there was no bullets found. There was no nothing. But blue lives, do they really matter? Because they don't. Because white supremacists attacked them, beat them, blinded them, killed them, burned them. Shall I go on? It is a disgusting thing that you would even think to give this to the governor. What an embarrassment for Sussex County. We are already labeled as a white supremacist county. And if you don't know it, go out of the county and visit Bergen County, Morris County. Visit them. And they don't come up here. You know why our town struggles with getting people to fill these doors here?
Thank you. Your time is up. Our next caller, thank you, is Scott Paul from Andover Township. Scott, are you on the line?
I am. I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Scott. You can, you can start.
Great. Thank you. So I'll keep this, well, I'll try to keep this short. So, man, the last meeting I expressed how disappointed I, you know, how disappointed I was that it's too big of an ask for white supremacy to be specifically condemned. So to find out today that Director Fantasia's resolution, which seems to name every instance of hate ever in existence besides white supremacy, so to find out that that's still being discussed, and the fact that you continue to dance around explicitly condemning white supremacy, it's less of a shock, but it's still scary. Before I say anything else, I just want to thank all the amazing people who called in so passionately about this issue of racism and hate. It really reminds me, it really reminds me of the feeling that I had when we did the BLM rally in Newton. We had a really great Black Lives Matter rally after George Floyd's passing. And we had what they estimate close to a thousand people marching up the streets in Newton, saying Black Lives Matter. We did the same thing in Sparta. We did the same thing in Byram. We did the same thing in Andover. And it reminds me of that, just the amount of people who maybe don't have a personal stake in this, and that it's hundreds, you know, these are, these are all white people that are screaming this, you know, but it let all the black people in the area know that, you know, that they care, that they have our back. And it really reminds me of that. So I just want to thank everybody on the call. It really means a lot. But you know, I just, I guess, just take note of the words of those who supported Fantasia's, Commissioner Fantasia's resolution. This week and last time, it was the same deflection. Here, as they discredit the reality of white supremacy, and instead deflect to, you know, some false equivalency. The people who are supporting that resolution don't believe in racism. They don't believe it's an issue, or don't understand the major significance that racism, you know, that people of color continue to face here. Your base doesn't recognize it, and you are in the incredible position to actually educate them on it. They don't think it's real. They don't think it's a big deal. And all of this dancing around makes it excruciatingly clear that you don't think it's a big deal either. We've heard other people on the call express their personal experiences with racism. I'm a black man who has lived in Sussex County for a long time, and I would need way, way, way more than three minutes to go over the instances that I face. But it's very real. And if you care about us, honestly, at this point, we shouldn't have to beg for it. And you've made your stances kind of clear. But for everybody that's on this call, remember that this is not a partisan thing. This is not a party thing. We are talking about systemic racism. We're talking about hate. We're talking about things that people deal with very real in 2021. These are real things that you face.
Your time is up, Scott. Scott, I need to move on to the next caller. Thank you. The next caller is Michelle Van Allen from Hardeston.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm here. I want to thank, I want to thank most of the speakers that have spoke up before me. And when I say most, most, because there was one that was extremely alarming, especially Mike Fravel and Scott Paul, that you have, you represent Sussex County. I would like to say that I was concerned that Commissioner Fantasia seemed incensed that Congressman Gohmeyer did not include her, or let her know about his talk at the college yesterday. This has been, the need for you to have a resolution has been going on for a couple of months now, being asked, being written to, being notified that this is how we feel. All the comments about what you included in that resolution, but leaving out Oath Keepers, Proud Boys, white supremacy, that rings so real. You are, you're totally ignoring what happened on January 6th. And I don't understand why. But yet, I have a feeling that I know why, especially with the ticket that you're running on. However, Josh Gohmeyer did speak very clearly, succinctly, and let us know what should be denounced, and you should follow suit. And when you do speak of him, remember that he is our congressman. And I'm surprised that all of a sudden, you decided to publish your resolution today, right after he spoke up. So maybe you felt it was necessary to bring it to the attention, and also to speak up about Black History Month, all of a sudden at the very end of the month, when it should have been very important at the very forefront of this month's meetings. I've been at meetings that you, that have run on for a long time, with how many people you brought in, and honored, and spoke about, and made note of many, many things.
One minute.
You can't tell me you did not have time to bring this up, knowing that it was coming, and that you should have mentioned it. The Docter resolution that you're trying to put before us, not denouncing white supremacy, you've heard from these callers. And this is just a small fraction of people in Sussex County that feel this way. So if you're, if you're, if you're going to talk about this, I have a question I'd like you to answer as well at the end. Who do you think attacked the Capitol on January 6th? Who do you think were the people that busted down the doors and the windows, and killed, and maimed, and hurt our Capitol Police, threatened our representative, our congressmen, our senators, wanted to hang Mike Pence? They built a newsstand right in front of the Capitol. Who do you think attacked the Capitol that day? Please, please tell us, because we need to know. And Sylvia had said once that she said it was probably Antifa, because she can't believe Trump supporters would do that.
Your time is up. Thank you for your remarks. Our next caller is Josh Hertzberg from Sparta.
Thank you. It's sad to hear how an issue as important as this has become such a political issue. And unfortunately, it's not new. It's been this way for a long time. You know, as one of the callers had said, this, this isn't a partisan issue. Well, it shouldn't be a partisan issue, but it's used that way quite a bit. Hate, racism, violence, should never be partisan, should never be political. And it's used by both sides. And it shouldn't be. I understand the feelings behind wanting your, your passion, or your, your hate to be named specifically in a, in a resolution. But if you had to name every kind of hate, every terrible kind of person that hates for any particular reason, I mean, I've heard callers all night cite specific incidences of hate, cite specific events. There's millions, unfortunately. So I understand the board trying to generalize it, generalize hate, generalize and condemn it all in one way, not to cite specific events. But that's also going to cause, at the time you single out something, or don't single out something, you're going to upset people. I just don't know the way around that. To say that these commissioners are complicit in racism by not specifically saying the terms that they were asked to say is ridiculous. I know each one of them. They are far from racist, and I know none of them support white supremacy, or any kind of hate that goes behind that. And I'll, and I'll say for myself, if that's something that, that you think that just by not saying it, that you're complicit, that's just not true. I condemn white supremacy. I condemn any kind of racism. And the rest of the commissioners do too. They've tried to step up and condemn the hate, condemn the hate for, for race, for religion. There's been atrocities all over the world over all of these things. But the government's not going to fix it for us. We have to do. We have to take action in our communities. It's up to us to do the change, not the government. They can't fix this. They can't legislate prejudice or hate. We have to do it in our communities. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Jeff Herring from Newton.
Hello. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for a fantastic job that you've all been doing, keeping our county beautiful, friendly, safe. And I just want to remind you how important it is to us that live here, that you keep it that way, as the list will call it the jewel of New Jersey. And there's not too many places left where you can go, certainly not in New Jersey, where your kids can walk to school, and people let their kids walk to school. And you can leave your car unlocked at the deli when you go in to get a cup of coffee in the morning. And I appreciate it, and it's been like that my whole life. With that said, I, I've been listening to the meetings just the last two weeks. It's very disturbing to hear the vitriol and the hate on these public comments, these open, I expected to hear about what was happening in our county. It's, many are outright racist and threatening. And we've had people telling us, we know where you work, and we're going to come get you. This is getting a little too much. It's all organized, transparently organized. These are copy and pasted from an organized national playbook. Regarding this hate resolution, it's become completely obvious after the last two weeks. This is not a hate resolution. I think we all know that. It's an attempt by activists to condemn, in particular, white people. And to make every one of you on the commissioner board bow before them and repeat it. That's what this is all about. I think the resolution is unnecessary, and I think it's a sleazy racist attempt to damage this board in this Republican county. This is all about politics. And I would encourage you to dispose of it completely. It's unnecessary. Our concerns on this board should be about opening businesses, about vaccinations, about the ratables, buildings being built in this county, things that have been so horribly mismanaged and destroyed by Governor Murphy, that I would ask that the commissioners spend their time keeping Sussex County beautiful, friendly, and safe, and not even entertaining. These are slimy political games. I, once again, I appreciate all of what you have done for this county. I am proud to have grown up here, walked to school, and had my kids go through these schools, which have taught them and made them wonderful professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Alan Majewski from Newton.
Yes, hi. Good evening. This is Alex Majewski from Newton.
Oh, Alex. I'm sorry. I said Alan. Sorry.
All right. So it's clear from the discussions taking place during the public portion of this meeting, that the only intention of some is to disrupt this board. You don't, you want to talk about hate? How about we talk about respect? It seems like there's certain people here that continue to harass and undermine the integrity and dedication of these commissioners. I'm going to discuss the job description of what the commissioners do. Many of you need to understand what their job entails. The commissioners are the center of legislative and administrative responsibility in Sussex County, and as such, they perform a dual role. As legislators, they draw up and adopt a budget, and in the role of administrators, they're responsible for spending the funds they have appropriated. The commissioners set policies for the operation of four main departments: Department of Central and Shared Services, Department of Engineering and Planning, Department of Finance and Library Services, and the Department of Health and Human Services, in addition to 12 divisions and a number of boards, commissions, authorities, and committees. County government also addresses regional issues such as strategic growth, solid waste disposal, water quality, the maintenance of county roads and bridges, farmland preservation in open space, and the county library system. Nowhere does it say that the commissioners must address social issues. We can all agree that social issues are important, and there is a time and place for discussion. However, they fall outside the scope of the job description of a commissioner. Instead of disrupting these meetings, how about volunteering in the community and solve the problems instead of creating them? Or put your name on the ballot and run yourself. You'll see it's not easy. For all the members of the Sussex County Democratic Committee attending tonight, if you were in these seats, you would not like it if everybody did this to you. So please, stop with the false narratives. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Our next caller is Carl Lazaro from Freedon. Carl, are you there? You may have to unmute yourself, Carl. That's good. We hear you.
All right. I'm very, I'm going to be very brief, unlike me. I'm getting, I'm getting I'm getting, I'm getting feedback. Can you still hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. What we say today are words. What means everything. Flower, flowery resolutions, statements, or words, actions are the only thing that Can you still hear me?
You, you're fading out, Mr. Lozaro.
All right, I had a problem over here, I'm not sure what it is. What we do means everything. The resolutions and the statements are words and actions, they're the only thing that matter. Each of our actions within our neighborhoods, our communities, our homes, where you go and what you do is what matters. You love your neighbor as yourself, you do unto others as you would have them do to you. It is one thing to be able to say to scout law, but quite another to take the arm of the elderly person and help them cross the street. You want an anti-hate resolution? I give it to you now. Go and do to others what you would have them do to you. That is a powerful resolution. People will follow your example before they follow your words. I have lived here for 50 years. I have never heard anything like this in all those 50 years. And I have been all over this county. I suggest we go home in peace.
One minute.
And examine ourselves. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Our next caller is Tom Muller from Andover Township.
Hate has ruled our country, and we have allowed politics to innate our hate system, and leaders, leaders are to lead our country, and they have failed to lead our country, and hate has proven that. And all of our presidents have failed to do that, and to include our current, who said he is going to move our country forward, but yet he keeps on alluding to the previous. We can't move forward unless we start at the top and move forward. We are not going to get rid of hate unless our government gets rid of hate. We need to start at the top and move on down. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. According to my roster, that is the last name, unless there is something on the computer. I am just working with the phone this evening.
Okay, what I do want to ask is actually, this is a question for Kevin. Can we then segue into open public comment for other issues? And we do have one speaker who did come on. I see in the comments from Thor, an individual by the name of Kath Galvin, that wishes to speak. So how, Kevin, do you suggest that we go about opening to all matters?
I missed the very first sentence that you said, I didn't hear it.
How do we go about, can we then, are we, do we have the ability, under Robert's rules, to be able to shift to opening this public session to all matters? Do we have to close this, vote on it, and then open again? What is the procedure here?
We can be open for all matters. I took, yeah, yeah, we don't have to do any, this is an open, this is a public session.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point, Terry, if you can add an individual by the name of Kath Galvin, Thor, if you can unmute that speaker, so they can share their municipality, and then open up for anyone who would like to speak on any matter, to take the roster.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Is this Ms. Galvin?
Yes, this is, yes, hi.
Ms. Galvin, can you please provide your municipality?
Hampton Township.
Thank you. You can start, three minutes.
Okay. Thank you for your time tonight, and for your work on behalf of the people of Sussex County. I'm calling tonight because of the ongoing communication in reference to the request for the statement acknowledging the negative impact of hate in our country, and particularly in our area. It's important, it's important to recognize the groups that pose the most threat in New Jersey, and I was curious myself, and I looked for resources. The New Jersey Office of Homeland Security has a website that I found helpful. They put together a 2020 list, a terror and threat assessment report, based on data of what actually is happening here, as opposed to threats, plots, and attacks. And they've noticed an increase in white supremacist extremists. It's just what they've noticed from the facts. Threats from white supremists have increased to high, being a high threat now, and they didn't used to be. And Al Qaeda, on the other hand, has been reduced to a low threat. So there has been a shift, and that happened in 2019. So I'm just asking you just to keep that in mind, and, you know, as far as putting information out there, they have good resources for, for just being careful about what you say, and, you know, what information you put out there. So I would say, I would like to share as a resource for the commissioners, and for anyone listening in the community, that the newjerseyhomelandssecurity.gov website is very helpful, and has a lot of information, and has like a 20-page report on threats that are active in New Jersey. And white supremacy groups are at the top of that list, and that's just the facts, it's not opinion, it just is. And that's it. Thanks for your help and your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I would like to open up to collect the roster of any individual that would like to speak on an alternate matter. At this point, please state your name and your municipality.
Kimberly Noel, Sparta.
I'm sorry, Kimberly, there was some feedback. Your last name?
Noel.
Noville?
Noel.
Noel, okay. N-O-E-L, okay, Sparta, already.
Kate Salerna, Sparta.
Yes, Ken Shrock.
I'm sorry, callers, just please be slow, I have to write this down. Kate Salerna, Sparta, next, the gentleman, yes?
Yes, Ken Shrock from Frankfurt Township.
Scott Paul, Andover.
Scott Paul, yeah, Scott Paul from Andover, okay. That was, you were before, yes.
Zoe Heath Vernon.
I, no.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Carter, is that a problem?
Excuse me?
I heard Commissioner Carter say no after I announced my name, is that an issue for him?
Yeah, we all heard that.
David Morovich.
My god, no. I think an apology is deserved.
Callers, please, I'm trying to put a roster together. Who was after Zoe?
Terry, you need to stop for a second, I'm sorry, but he just insulted Zoe, and we all heard it.
That's what I was talking about with the unprofessionalism with the commissioners.
Very unprofessional. Commissioner Carter.
You guys have been insulting her the entire night, so.
Okay, okay, whoa, 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 everybody, please, can we please take the roster? Again, let's get the names down up to this point thus far. Everybody's been.
It's okay, it's all recorded.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that again. I'm taking down the, excuse me, excuse me. Terry's taking down the roster, so that you're able to speak, but speaking over each other is not working. And again, I do not see, I do not see who speaks, I do not see who's speaking, to identify who that individual was, because I'm writing down the names, as Terry's writing down the names. So if you could just be respectful.
Not to mention we had no say in that appointment.
Excuse me?
Stephen Denman, Sussex Borough.
Stephen Denman, Sussex Borough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And allow me to, allow me to interrupt, allow me to interrupt for a second. I'm going to ask the call moderator again, as we're trying to take these names. Anybody speaks at a turn as we try to take the names, can you please mute that person?
Just to ask quickly, Terry, you got me, right? This is Zoe Heath from Vernon.
Yes, I do, and after Zoe, I have Stephen Denman from Sussex Borough. That's my last name I have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sarah Hobart, Newton, New Jersey.
Sarah, could I have your last name, Sarah, what?
Hobart. H-O-B-A-U-G-H. Newton.
Yes, thank you.
Tom Muller.
Tom, I know you spoke, that was Andover Township, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Edie Rotandi, Hampton. Did you get Ken Shrock from Frankfurt?
Yes, you were the third, after Kate Salerna from Sparta, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Morovich Vernon.
Was that Amir again?
Yes, Hamburg. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, who was the Vernon caller?
Morovich.
Morovich, did you just speak prior?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to keep my.
Anna Hemsworth from Franklin.
Anna Helmsworth?
Hemsworth, H-E-M-S-W-O-R-T-H.
From, I'm sorry, what town?
Franklin.
Franklin, all right.
Okay, hearing no one else come forward.
Nick DePiano, Newton.
Sorry, Mick.
Nick DePiano, okay, Newton.
With an M, Terry, it's the same.
Yes, Mick.
This poor guy, we're remusing his nick.
I assure you, I'm saying Mick, it's just probably my sluggishness at this time, sorry.
Michelle Van Allen-Hardison.
I have you, Michelle, thank you.
Josh Hertzberg, Sparta.
All right, Josh, thank you. Does that conclude our roster?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Terry, but I was just trying to send Commissioner Fantasia a message, since she's one of the hosts, and it says that she is not in this meeting. Is it possible that she was knocked out?
I am on the phone, I'll inquire with the meeting, the meeting administrator is hearing this, so let's see.
I'd also like to add my name to the list.
And, I'm sorry, and your name is?
Sure, Lauren Jones-Rabbit, Newton.
Hello? Hello? Can I put my name on the list also?
I apologize, Commissioner Fantasia, my call dropped, and I just got back on, so I don't know what I missed. I'm sorry.
Well, there was, there was an inquiry as to if you were on the call, on the meeting.
Yeah, I lost, I lost my signal.
All right, we just had another addition, Lauren Jones-Rabbit, Newton. I think we're at 16 so far.
All right, can I put my name also?
Your name?
Eileen Qualley, Lafayette, New Jersey. C-A-W-L-E-Y.
Okay, this public session will again adhere to the same rules of three minutes per speaker on any matter at this point, so Terry, please call the first speaker.
Our first speaker is Kimberly Noel from Sparta.
Thank you, yes, I'm here.
Okay, please start.
Last meeting, I proposed a resolution regarding the Tennessee Gap Pipeline, the expansion that's happening. I think it's going to be very detrimental to our county's natural resources, as well as the county residents' health, and it provides no real revenue for the county, to the taxpayers. The gas simply goes right through New Jersey to New York, so basically, there's no upside to allowing this to happen. I didn't see that on the agenda, I just wasn't sure what happened with that resolution that was sent last meeting. Along with that, I'd also like to say that I don't support the logging on Spartan Mountain. They've already logged 35 acres, and they've shown that they can't do it responsibly and in compliance with the Highlands Act. The trees are worth more to us, living, as well as they act as a filter for the water, they are canopy, and they protect our drinking water, they protect the animals. The water that comes from the Highland area in Sussex County serves 6.2 million people in New Jersey. So opening our forests to logging causes more stormwater runoff, more silt in our rivers, and pollution, and also carbon in our atmosphere. So these logging activities are a violation of the Highlands Water Protection Act, and that was signed into law in 2004, all with the excuse to create a habitat for a single bird species, while destroying habitat for over 75 other bird species, as well as a threatened and endangered bat population. The plan does not have any way to reinforce the rules, or any way for us to make sure that the commercial loggers are not violating the sidelines. I really don't think that this should be supported. I know they're going to start logging soon, I'd like to see the commissioners also pass a resolution on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Kate Salerna from Sparta.
I'm here.
Okay, please start.
Okay, first, I would like to point out that David Morovich, or whatever, AKA Willie Winkler, who is talking about, quote, "our county," and who does and does not live here, no, that's a fake name, just so you know, and he lives in Pennsylvania. So if you want to talk about who lives in Pennsylvania. I can't unmute. I'm sorry, am I being interrupted, or?
Please continue.
Who is speaking, by the way, for the moderator? Ms. Salerna was speaking, and somebody is making some kind of noise in the background. Please give her back her time here, 30 seconds.
Okay, so yeah, just to be clear, David Morovich, we know that you are Willie Winkler, and that that's a fake name, and we know that you live in Pennsylvania. Anyway, I'd like to speak now about some comments that were made at our last meeting, where accusations were thrown around surrounding the meaning and impact of the word racist, and it's used here in this county. Commissioner Patillo accused callers of directly calling her a racist, saying, quote, "I'm a racist because I didn't vote marijuana, I'm a racist because I'm pro-life. I want to be clear that accusation is a complete fabrication, and frankly, the association being made there is more troubling to me than the unfounded accusation itself." Next, again from Commissioner Patillo, quote, "Not everyone is racist because they disagree with you. To this, I have to ask, what exactly are we disagreeing with that involves racism? Conservatives have built an entire platform on personal responsibility, so it should be bipartisan and very reasonable to ask that of our elected officials. Your words and actions are your responsibility, it should be easy not to engage in overtly conscious acts of racism or racist speech, if that is not who you are or who you represent. And again, I will state plainly, if you think your words and actions could be misconstrued as racist, and you're a business owner, or an elected official..." as racist, and you're a business owner, or an elected official, then I highly suggest you think before you speak or act. Regarding Commissioner Patillo's comments about outsiders trying to infiltrate Newark last year during the civil unrest, I found the following information. During a peaceful Black Lives Matter demonstration, a group of about fifteen mostly white young people attempted to incite riots at the first precinct where the 1967 rebellion began, and elsewhere in the city. A witness said he began hearing people confirm to the outsiders discussing burning the city down. One individual jumped on a police car and attempted to smash a window before the witness pulled them off. This testimony is yet another example that Commissioner Patillo herself has brought to light, that highlights the actions of organized groups with intentions of violence and destruction, which we clearly condemn in our resolution, and that are once again not affiliated with the Black Lives Matter movement. Lastly, again from Commissioner Patillo, quote, "If you really want to have a conversation, I'm open to that. You want to really start coalitions like they did in Newark and solve these problems? I'm open to that." Ms. Patillo, and commissioners, our, quote, "coalition" has been working tirelessly, and we have been trying to open the lines of communication and get you to hear us since the first commissioners' meeting of the new year. We have a lot of ideas that go beyond this resolution, and we are ready to work. In the meantime, county commissioners, we ask you to pass our resolution as it is written. Set a precedent against hate and violence in this community now. Set a better tone for 2021. Start the lines of bipartisan communication. We are ready when you are."
Are you finished?
Oh, no, I'm not finished, but...
Your time is running out, it's bye, I mean, the clock's still running.
No, no, but, no, I'm not finished, so, you know, we, we got a lot of work to do, I'll add that, and once again, thank you to all the support that we've had with all of the callers, it's just been amazing. We know who the couple of trolls are, that are trying to dismantle what we're doing, and I just wanted to know if that's not gonna happen.
Well, now your time's up, thank you very much. Our next caller is Ken Shrock from Franklin Township?
Yes, I, Ken Shrock from Frankfurt Township, yeah...
Oh, Frankfurt, I'm sorry, I said thanks, I think Franklin, okay, can't read my writing at this hour, sorry.
That's all. Yeah, this issue speaks to the insidious attempt by the progressive left to slowly erode various rights bestowed on us by the Constitution. While today we're seeing demands for what some may call merely symbolic actions by local governing bodies to officially condemn hate, I feel that in a not-too-distant future, should these governing bodies continue to acquiesce to these progressive dictates, this slippery slope will lead to greater censorship and attempts to legislate hate, which would undoubtedly include hate speech, thus effectively ending our absolute right to free speech and other forms of expression. Last week, I saw a proposal recommending a pro-respect resolution, instead of an anti-hate version. I support that. It seems disingenuous on the part of those pushing an anti-hate version, and if they truly feel hate is such a terrible negative thing, then why do they desire to bring it front and center and give it the attention that, if they were being honest with themselves, they would admit it does not deserve? A pro-respect, respect platform comes from a positive perspective, and offers so much more in terms of promoting unity and healing within our community and beyond. Subsequent to that, I read the current proposed version of the resolution, and while it is not from a pro-respect perspective, it does address the issue at hand in a way that makes sense. The issue I'm referring to is the progressive left's desire to turn the concept of hate into a tangible, absolute act, which can be codified, legislated, and made punishable. Hate is a state of mind, a feeling, a thought, an emotion, a concept, just like love, all of which exist in the mind. Never should one's thoughts be the subject of any governmental restrictions. Most importantly, what most people forget, or hate to admit, is that hate is legal, and for the sanctity of free thought and free speech, it must remain that way. Thus, any resolution condemning hate would be a resolution condemning a constitutionally-protected, inherent, natural right.
Thank you.
As you also address in your proposed resolution, we as a society have already condemned hateful acts through hate crime laws. While I do feel that these laws presume a motive of hate on the part of an accused, and therefore presume to know such a person's thoughts, and are thus, in my view...
One minute.
Your reference to them was necessary in this context. I was also glad to see no mention of any particular hate group. Creating such a list would be exhaustive, as it would end up requiring the inclusion of any group of ideology, religion, from all segments of the political spectrum, that has or desires to conduct itself contrary to the laws of civilized nations. Obviously, not all those seeking an anti-hate resolution are from the left of center, and many others, progressives and conservatives, are not seeking to take away our rights, but are just seeking a more peaceful society. Personally, I would like it to be known that I am not a hateful person. I truly do not hate anyone or anything, as doing so would be a great waste of time and energy. Hate as a mindset is a terrible thing, and can be extremely damaging to the person who chooses to manifest it, controlling and slowly eating at them. Nonetheless, we can hate if we choose to, and that must remain so. Thank you.
Thank you, your next caller is Scott Paul from Andover Township.
No condemnation for that interjection there, eh?
Excuse me, is Mr. Paul there?
I have a condemnation for, excuse me, Terry, I have a condemnation for everybody who cannot keep it together and act like a grown adult right now. I hear sighs, I, no, enough! I hear all kinds of nonsense, and I'm kind of over it, and can we all extend some respect to each other, for once?
Yeah, that'd be great.
For once, okay, that would be wonderful, so that includes you and me and everybody on this call. So, everybody, please keep it together, so we can get through all this. I'm taking down a lot of information here, and I would appreciate if you offered me the same respect that the board is offering you.
Mr. Scott Paul from Andover Township?
Yep, yeah, um, yeah, so I, uh, I guess respect is, is a, is a good place to start. Two weeks ago, I, uh, Commissioner Fasano, he, he brought up respect, and the importance of that in dealing with this, and, uh, these conversations obviously do get very tense, and they do get heated, and, uh, there are obviously people with certain stakes in this, and there are people who, um, may not actually care about this issue, but, uh, somebody told them to be here, um, but for the people who are, who are here genuinely because either they're, they're for, or against, or, or just don't really understand this, I guess, uh, this is, this is more geared to the people who don't understand, um, the initial resolution that was proposed, Kristi Lavin's, um, and, and don't really understand the, the need, or the, uh, you know what, I'm not even gonna say need anymore, because this, it, it really was a want, it, it really was, um, wanting to look at the momentum of what was going on around the country, and locking arms with marginalized people, and allies, and everybody who cares, and says, hey, you know, we look at this, um, it's wrong, we know what, what has gone on here in Sussex County, there is so much documentation on, you know, the KKKs, and, and all these things that were held right here in this county, and all the things that persist, the things that are, are, the racism that is still very much alive here today, um, that, that is what we need to be talking about, you know, that is, that is really what we need to be talking about, and, and I think that the, uh, the, the misunderstanding about it, and the, the arguing that's following, is really, really unproductive, and it's just distracting from the whole thing. A couple of people have talked about how racism is not an issue, and, uh, earlier, Brittany brought up, she, she asked if, uh, Commissioner Fantasia, if you consulted any black people when, or people of color, um, when, when drafting this resolution, and I think that it's important, that if you're actually gonna pretend to, um, represent everybody, just, you know, bring them in, and, 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 I don't, I don't mean to be offensive, but it just, it comes off as pretending, when it's like, we're being talked for when nobody's asking us. It's like, we're telling you that this is a problem, and then we're being told it's not a problem by people that don't have to face it. And, and I know I don't have much time, but, um, uh, I know, uh, Hertzberg's on the call, he's coming up, um, you know, you talked about, uh, calling out specific groups, and I know your attentions are good, and, and I don't want to put you on the spot, so maybe we can chat about this on another channel, um, but I'm curious, as a commissioner, did you take any sort of, uh, cultural competence course or anything like that? Because I'm just curious to see what steps you guys take, to make sure you understand people that don't come...
Your time is up, thank you very much, your comment. Our next caller is Zoe Heath from Vernon.
Thank you, um, it's really unfortunate that we have to have a young person of color explain why racism is bad to a board of white elected officials. I also like to say, a list of hate groups do exist, it is on the Southern Poverty Law Center and the Anti-Defamation League, talks about symbols, organizations, all the groups, so the resource is out there, and you can consult it, I can send you guys emails if you would like. However, what I wanted to talk about in the all items portion of public comment, is that, uh, it appears that the county website, and the people who write press releases for the county are basically using that source as a buy-the-taxpayer campaign piece for Commissioner Fantasia. There was a press release that went out early this month, that also cited the Sussex County watchdog, which, I mean, calling it a source in itself is a strong word, because it is not truthful, and inherently incorrect, and with bias, especially considering it is paid for by the Sussex County GOP and their candidates. I just think it is very unfortunate that the taxpayers are saddled with paying for these press releases, when they're just about Commissioner Fantasia challenging the press and critics, because that's not what the commissioners are here to do. Neither are these resolutions about powers with our governor, but we all know that our commissioners don't do what they're here to do. They spend money on lawyers for meaningless ballot questions about undocumented immigrants that cost the county and the taxpayers thirty thousand dollars, um, and just use it for a political point. I just, I wish we could do better, it is unfortunate that we constantly have to explain racism and bigotry to our elected officials, while they're using our tax money to promote themselves and their party. That's all, thank you.
All right, next caller is Steve Denman from Sussex Borough.
Hello.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Stephen.
Great. For the side, uh, so I consider myself a moderate, and have been pretty disturbed about, by the divisiveness of our county and our country. As of late, I was an independent up until this current election. My father worked in Sussex County as I grew up, um, much of his side of the family is from here, and I worked here myself most summers. I grew up in Orange County, New York, just across the border. I wrote a very simple letter in seventh grade to the paper, saying, "Good people should overpower racism." And it was maybe six sentences long, but it became a thing in my school, in the area, in my family, and I was warned that I should keep my head down, and I did for a long time, and so it's hard for me to speak up right now. I saw, growing up, in Sussex County, in Orange County, in Pike County, uh, we, we live in a racist area, and I think there's no denying that. I'm not saying anyone on the board is racist, because I haven't been in on the conversation, I haven't been listening, and I'm happy to be listening tonight. I left here to go get educated, and I never really thought I would come back after I did. I moved away, um, and I think a lot of young people do, um, and that's part of the problem with our economic plight here in this area, is all of the brilliant minds leave. Some of them have moved in, um, and so anyways, I moved back to Sussex to work for my family's business, and Sussex County has a long way to go, and I do believe it starts in the community, as the last caller of the last session said, and hence why I think a lot of people are calling their county officials, because they believe it starts here, uh, the ends of hate starts here.
One minute.
Okay, there was a caller who asked the commissioners to keep Sussex friendly and safe, including making sure that children can walk to school. I live on Route 23, and I watch Hispanic kids walk to Sussex Middle School with Confederate flags driving down the road, those flags that mostly gave way to "Don't Tread on Me," or Trump flags, and, uh, it's been very disturbing to watch. So, denounce, to denounce hate is hard, and to learn from other people and where they're coming from, I encourage that from others. I applaud the commission to take, for taking the title of Free Holder out, and I was very encouraged that at least to see younger blood in the leadership of our county. I am hopeful for the administration of Don Fortunato. I like what President Biden has said about coming together, how Josh Gottheimer has been working in the Problem Solvers Caucus. There are a few other ideas they had...
Your time is up, Stephen, I need to move on to the next caller.
Thank you.
Um, our next caller is Sarah Hobart from Newbur, Newton. Sarah, are you there?
I am, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, please start.
Hi, um, okay, so I want to thank you all for, uh, three speaking times, for all of us, letting us talk will hopefully show you that we are serious, and that we are here to stay and fight against injustices. Also, I want to say thank you to all the callers who are condemning the, the injustices, and showing the commissioners that we are here to stay until and after they know right from wrong. So, one of my first points is I want to ask you not to allow the Tennessee pipeline to go through the area. When, if not the gas leaks out, it causes damage to the environment, along with the environmental degradation of actually making the infrastructure for the pipeline. My second point is I ask you to stop being openly hateful and racist to your constituents. Racism exists in our country, and it needs to be stopped and condemned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, um, next caller is Tom Muller from Andover Township. Tom, are you there?
Yes, hello, um... My comment was just gonna be, just on the fact that, uh, James Madison was a founder, he was the formation of the US Constitution, he studied many and hundreds of philosophers. He wrote the Constitution that was debated and finally signed back in seventeen eighty-seven, which formed what many of us believe is the democracy, which is actually a democratic republic, which actually means that the republic is, that we have representatives that we elect, and we are the democracy, so the constituents actually elect the officials that represent us and actually form what we want. Therefore, I think it's a little rude that some of the committee members on here are making inappropriate comments to the constituents. I believe one of them actually kind of got up and walked out earlier, and one of them made a rude comment to Zoe, and was a little bit snide earlier in these conversations. I think it would be nice that they were just a little more appropriate to taking in their constituents' comments, seeing how the constituents are the actual government in the United States and in Sussex County. You guys are elected into your appointments, and you can be recalled out of your appointments. Please just listen to what they have to say, take it into consideration into the future in designing these. This may not be your role, but they are giving you what they feel that needs to come together. Thank you.
Thank you, um, our next caller is Katie Rotandi from Hampton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Katie, please start.
Okay, I just wanted to, just quickly ask about if the recordings could be put back on YouTube again. I know they're just audio recordings now that we've been moved to everything being virtual, but the last one, or I guess the one, last one in person, uh, was video, was on the sixth of 2021, so I was wondering if they could be put back on YouTube and not just on the site, because, um, it's not very, um, not, not user-friendly, like the audio player, but it's not as easy to, it's not as accessible for people with any varying degrees of, um, technology, and also YouTube's just quicker to grab, and, um, just overall, there's, it's great about the at-home tests, um, and the COVID-at-home tests, and I've been spreading the word about that, but I think a lot of people still don't know it, so I, I think maybe, I don't know, I know, i- it's an undertaking, but an overhaul of the website in some way, or another way to reach constituents, because I know there's been a lot of information that while, yes, it's being put out, it's, it's not totally getting there, so, because not everyone uses Facebook, and then, you know, some people use a website, but not this, and that, and the other things, so I know you can't please everyone, but at least with the videos for this stuff, it's possible to put, continue to put them on YouTube, um, and just with some of the COVID stuff, if there's either, I don't know, maybe something designated specifically, like a texting line or something, designated specifically, like a texting line or something, um, uh, for something of that nature, just so that people can have the information, because I, a lot of people haven't been able to, to get it. And also, that's a, because of our area, it's very rural, so it's, I'm not blaming the commissioners. I'm, I'm just giving a suggestion that I think would be helpful and also asking if the, the audio slash videos could be put on YouTube again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller just here with me is Amir from Hamburg. Are you there? Asmanovich from Hamburg? Maybe you've muted yourself, Amir Asmanovich from Hamburg. Okay, I'm gonna move on to-
Hello, hello, sorry, sorry, sorry. I, I have double, uh, I apologize for that. I, by mistake, I pressed my second mute button. I, I, I'm sorry about that.
That's all right.
A couple of things come to mind that I, I forgot to mention, uh, in, in the first three minutes that I've read, um, and this is a conversation that I had with one of my, one of my good friends. Uh, I do not consider him a hateful person at all. Um, he's my fellow veteran, and, uh, we talk about a lot of, um, controversial issues. We do not agree on a lot of them, but, um, uh, at one point in time, um, slavery was, was one of the things we talked about, and, and he brought up a point where, uh, the people that really wanted slavery to end were slave owners because they, um, provided food, clothing, and, and sustenance for slaves. Um, I took this on a, as a face of value because I didn't know any better until, uh, somebody introduced me to Frederick Douglass, and I'm sure that a, a lot of people here on this call know about Frederick Douglass. Um, he lived in a burlock sack for the first ten years of his life. He did not receive a pair of pants until he was twelve from one of his owners. He, uh, from, from the beginning, he was, um, he was a plaything for one of his, uh, owner's kids, where he followed him everywhere, pick up stuff after him, and so on and so forth. He also had to run away from the South up to New York, and he's the, uh, the son of Rochester County up in New York. Um, people were looking for him, cops were looking for him, and so on and so forth. Um, so that's one thing that, that I've learned. Fast forward to nineteen-sixties, to the, um, to the Civil Rights Movement, LBJ, our president, right after Kennedy got assassinated, had two people that were helpers, they, they helped him out. Uh, they lived in Washington, D.C. with him, and he sent them down to, um, down to Texas to homes, and they couldn't fly at that time, so they had to take a car. And one thing that LBJ didn't think about is that majority of rest stops from Washington, D.C. to Texas, uh, colored people were not allowed to stop. They were not allowed to, uh, go in, take rest, use the restrooms. So ma- majority of their time was spent on the-
One minute.
-side of the streets, uh, inside of the roads, um, relieving themselves. And LBJ was one of, one of the, I mean, he was, uh, he was from Texas. He knew what he was talking about. He was one of the people that said with the nineteen-sixty-seven resolution, we're gonna lose South for next hundred years. Um, these are some of the things that I was not aware of up until the Sussex County Community Library allowed me to borrow books and, and start educating myself. Um, so appreciate for, uh, for the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amir. One second, please. Uh, our next caller is David Maravich from Vernon. Are you there?
Yes, uh, I want to say it's excellent run done by Kenneth Sharrick earlier. It was well done, but I'm afraid it's lost on many of these people of Marxist inclinations who just, you know, one of them said that Pol Pot slaughtered the bad intellectuals or that Mao's purge made sense, and then I just heard about, uh, uh, a test, a virtue test, uh, for the commission, have you done culture competence? So in the note, the threat we just received, if we own a business, we need to watch what we say. Uh, so I got it. So now business owners are gonna learn what hate is, huh? Uh, if they say the wrong thing, they lose their business. Uh, this isn't very American. Now, three hundred thousand, to the County Commission, three hundred thousand white Northerners died fighting in the Civil War to free the slaves, and, uh, many people, uh, for, and when it, the military actually went and pay an head point to desegregate the South that were centered by Eisenhower. Um, that, eh, there's so much we can talk about in the context of history. To cherry pick, uh, narrow little examples to justify a ca- an unrelated cause is, um, the last refuge of the scoundrel. Uh, the disrespect and condescension insults this commission's received should show what a false flag this is. I mean, this isn't the progressive left. I heard it called the progressive left we're dealing with. I mean, these are people who hate America, these are Marxists, and then they employ the Democratic Party. They don't like individual rights, and they want to punish any opinion that isn't their own. It's not about racism, it's about making it so nobody can disagree. So if you don't condemn who they want, then you become a racist. So if I don't say, what, what group is next, the NRA? What group is next, the VFW? Any group that we decide is gonna be against what we believe in, we're gonna call them a racist, and we're gonna ostracize them, shut them down, and destroy them. Um, the world they want is a dystopia. They pretend grandeur, compassion for all sorts of pathetic figures, but they're in actuality, it's a disguise for the worst and most respectable practices. Uh, you know, we're giving, we were back to giving twenty-five million dollars a year to Pakistan, uh, for gender studies. Pakistan, which is, uh, been a big supporter, Pakistani ISI, of the, uh, of, of Taliban and ISIS, so it's, it's even more comical. And I'm sure Pakistan's gonna do gender-
One minute.
Yeah. They'll, what we're looking at by conceding to this is, you know, uh, society of drug addiction, mob rule, loss of property rights. Um, we watched our cities burn this year. Uh, it's not Bill Gates' compound that gets burned down by BLM, it's not Jeff Bezos that gets beaten by Antifa mob, it's homes and businesses of good citizens. Um, we're, the extremists are who I hear, uh, talking right now, inventing hate and, uh, and trying to create an ostr- a culture of ostracization for those who don't agree with them. Uh, please, Sussex County Commission, do not take the bait, don't give these extremists more space. They're not even from here.
All right. All right. Next caller is Anna Helmsworth from Franklin.
Hi, this is Anna Hemsworth from Franklin.
Oh, Hemsworth, sorry.
That's okay. Um, I am a small business owner, a U.S. Navy veteran, and have been an active member of my community for over twenty-five years. I also happen to be a Latina. Um, I can tell you that while I do not know most of the members on, uh, the Board of Commissioners, I have interacted with Fantasia, uh, you know, respectfully online, and I appreciate those interactions. Um, but wh- what I wanted to say was, what I heard a lot of today is the, it doesn't happen to me, so it can't exist, and it is, you know, it is saddening to me. Having lived in Sussex County as long as I have, um, and having been a part of this community, I can tell you that from the moment I moved up here and people asked me which farm I was working at, because clearly a Latina had to be a migrant farm worker, to being called the N-word. Um, is somebody interrupting? Maybe you should mute, because I only have three minutes, and I want my time paused while the gentleman who said, oh, come on, please, gets his stuff together.
Yes, I'm, I'm, just keep talking, I'm, I'm watching the time.
Okay, thank you. So, um, at the mute button, and maybe you, they need to know where it is. But anyway, um, my issue is that not only have I been called the migrant farm worker, sir, um, I have also been called the N-word. I have been, um, i- i- if you haven't been on the receiving end of these things, it doesn't mean it doesn't happen. My Latino children who have grown up since they were babies here in Sussex County, didn't matter how long they'd been here, right? When they went to school, they were still called names. They were still called names. It did not matter. Today, a plea from a father in another town whose, whose child i- i- he's afraid for because of the color of their skin, this happens on the daily in Sussex County, in Sussex County.
One minute.
I need for the commissioners to extend themselves to the community that they serve. That includes me as a Latina, right? That includes people who look different from them. I offer my services. I am a professional, I have traveled nationally, I am an instructional designer, a change management professional who's worked for Fortune one hundred companies. I'm happy to sit with the commissioners to work on this resolution, because the resolution in its current form is a, is a slap in the face to all that I have put up with and my children have had to endure, having lived here in Sussex County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Mick DiPiano from Newton. Can you hear me? Are you there? You can hear me? Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, so I wanted to start by thanking the commissioners for allowing three opportunities to speak tonight. Um, previously, I had spoken about the importance of the chat feature, which was turned on tonight, and had allowed, uh, a large number of people who had mute issues to be able to express that they wanted to talk, and they were able to talk. Uh, so as much as I've condemned you for other issues, one thing I will say is you have made sure that we're able to speak our mind, and I want to thank you for that. Again, I mentioned that I'm a parent, and, uh, that having these meetings have an online component allows a large number of people who wouldn't be able to attend otherwise to attend, and I want you to consider allowing it in the future, post-COVID, as, uh, you do seem to care about that issue. Um, all right, so that's a lot now, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, so I hear a lot of people mentioning hate crimes all across the country and the world, genocide, riots. None of those things happened in Sussex County. Every single thing, over a dozen things I mentioned, happened in Sussex County, and that was in every example I found while doing research to speak today. Uh, most of these, I actually didn't even need to research because I was well aware of them. So, uh, I don't know why we need to worry about condemning hate that's not happening in our county. It's very clear, our county has certain problems that we can address in the county. What city was burnt in our county? Oh, that's right, none of them. But again, a lot of extremists were ri- were arrested in our county, a- and they, uh, were, uh, you know, um, not of right-wing extremists, uh, white nationalists, and they had nothing, and this is what our county is dealing with. Uh, I'm not the only one who gave examples. I would like to encourage you to read an article, uh, about a student in Sparta who, uh, self- said that going to school was suffocating due to bigotry. There's also a, a video of her talking about the intolerance she experienced. I didn't get to mention, but there was also an incident at a basketball game in, um, Waukele, where, uh, it was alleged that racial slurs were used between, um, students during a game. Um, so yeah, I, I heard the, the commissioners condemn, uh, the genocide of Muslims in China, but when, uh, Sussex County members speak of eliminating Muslims and Islams from our country, there's no issue they seem to have with that. Oh, uh, Black History Month, but did you do any events to promote education on Black History? And if not, can you commit to doing some? Um, either with the Ranger of the Monks or at least prepare to do some next year so that, uh, there's more than a hollow mentioning of it?
Mick, your time is up. Thank you. Our next caller is Michelle Van Allen from Hardeston.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, I had to unmute there. I would like to address, uh, the COVID situation in our county. I personally appreciate all that Governor Murphy has done to flatten the curve in our state, and he has done a tremendous job to fight this horrendous mess that the past president created, denying the virus existed, that it was a hoax, and that it would be gone by last April. Please put blame where blame is due. It's hard to put out a fire with a bucket of water. Trump- Gas, lean on this fire. And I, for one, am so happy that Governor Murphy is at the helm to help us put it out. I'm also very happy that Governor Murphy signed the bill that changed the name of Freeholder, which is not only outdated and archaic, uh, term, but it's also offensive to people of color and women, and it's now changed the county commissioner, like the rest of the country. I also want to make a note to all the speakers tonight, and the ones that spoke especially, um, despite the intimidation tactics of the Sussex County Republican, Republican Committee's board member, Alex Majewski, and their paid representative, William Winkler, who is here under an alias. This is the exact right place to be making your voice heard. Winkler didn't even deny the statement from another caller that he's here as a paid troll under an alias. He ran through talking points to scare the people of Sussex County who actually live here, and he's trying to divide us. There are many people on this call from our community. It is a public session, it is for the sole purpose of public comment, so having party operatives claim that anyone speaking out is derailing the meeting is complete nonsense. There are people on this call that have run for office, are running for office, and have just as much right as anybody else to use their voice. If you're talking about playing political games, well, they are front and center tonight. Commissioners, please open your ears and listen to all that are speaking, not just the ones that are saying what you want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Josh Hertzberg from Sparta.
Thank you. You know, eh, there's been a lot of mixed messages being sent to the commissioners tonight. Um, some of the callers talked about the places and issues they wanted included in this, others said we should keep it to the county. It's, it's gonna be very hard, like I said before, for them to include everybody's when, when they're getting so many different things that should be included. They all know that I used to always say that I was against doing pro- doing, um, these, these things that, that were so overreaching. The resolutions that did not have action, resolutions that were, were something that were outside of our, our scope, because no matter what your intention was, no matter how much you meant to do good with it, you were always gonna offend somebody or leave somebody out. And this is the result of things like this. And no matter how, how much your intentions are, are well, you know, you, you have good intentions, you are always gonna upset somebody. Perfect case, tonight there are so many speaking. So many of you spoke to clearly issues that, that matter to you and that you believe are important, and others just reiterating political rhetoric. How do you sift through all of that to see what's real and what's not? And that's the problem with our society today, is things that should be important, that we should me- be able to meet in the middle on, become political rhetoric, just used to fuel politics. You know, I used to believe that Republicans, Democrats really wanted the same goal, but we believed there were different ways to get there. I, I don't see that anymore. Sadly, I think the goals are so far apart that I don't know how we get there. There are still good people that wanna do the right thing, but you, you can't come and on these calls and just attack people when you don't get what you want. That doesn't serve anything. That doesn't get you anywhere. We talked a lot about hate-
One minute.
-and racism. I didn't hear anybody talk about solutions. Maybe we start there. Maybe we start talking about solutions to problems instead of just, you know, writing resolutions about the problems. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Our next caller is Lauren Jones-Rabbit from Newton.
Hi, can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Lauren. Please start.
Okay. Um, Scott Paul, he just wanted to get a chance to just quote, um, Martin Luther King Jr., um, because he didn't get a chance to. Um, and it, it's just, shallow understanding from people of goodwill is more frustrating than absolute misunderstanding from people of ill will. Lukewarm acceptance is much more bewildering than outright rejection. And I actually have to agree with, um, the, the caller before me in that some of these things are a distraction from actually getting, um, work done around, um, just educating about the whole history and stuff that has been left out, and even, even in our own county, um, the things that we, we don't know about, um, about how the legacies of slavery have rippled. And so I thought maybe it just would be a good idea to, um, and not even slavery, just Jim Crow and segregation and, and, and poverty, really. So I thought, you know, it might just be a good idea to, to read off some names of, of black Americans, because our, all of the seven wonderful events that were BLM, which I wish, wish that some, um, you know, of, of the commissioners could have come to more of them to see what it was about, were about uplifting black voices and maybe obscure voices that people didn't know about, and, and it's pretty, it's pretty amazing, the art. So I'm just gonna read the names. Lucille Clifton, Ann Cole Low, Clementine Hunter, Mary Walker, Ella Baker, Audra Lord, June Jordan, Fannie Lou Hamer, Gwendolyn Brooks, Faith Ringel, Gordon Parks, James Baldwin, Jacob Lawrence, Terrence Hayes. And, and I, I just, I'll end by just reading a, a poem by Lucille Clifton. Um, these are artists and poe- poets and writers that maybe you don't know about, and if you don't know about them, then you don't know the history of racism in our country.
One minute.
So it's really important. So here it is, it's the river between us. In the river- that your father fished, my father was baptized. It was their hunger that defined them. One, a man who knew he could feed himself if it all came down; the other, a man who knew he needed help. This is about more than color. It is about how we learn to see ourselves. It is about geography and memory. It is about being poor people in America. It is about my father, and yours, and you, and me, and the river that is between us. And again, that's Lucille Clifton. And really, we can build bridges. And I just hope you listen to some of the people who have done the work, and they know some things that maybe you don't. And we can stop the rhetoric and start moving forward. But white supremacy doesn't, condemning it isn't leaving anyone out. We're all a part of it. It affects every single one of us.
Lauren, your time is up.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Our final caller is Eileen Cowley from Lafayette. Eileen, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. How are you? Thank you for listening. I'm calling regarding support for the anti-hate resolution. Also, I've been in Sussex County for 30 years, and the first thing I noticed was that it's racist. And I agree with the young man who called earlier that great minds are leaving this county. My children are gone, you know, my son, he went to college. He had black and brown and gay friends and transgender friends. And, you know, they go out in the world and they realize that they've kind of been raised in a racist county. And it stinks. Like, this county has trouble retaining young people. They go off to college and they meet all these people of different colors, you know. And I just think that the county needs to be more inclusive. Absolutely. I mean, there's Confederate flags flying in my neighborhood. I also believe that that devalues my property. If I'm going to look at a home and I see Confederate flags flying, I'm not going to buy a home in that neighborhood. You know, we have to think about the socioeconomic issues regarding racism in this county also. And I just see it. My friends, actually, you know, honestly, our county is a laughingstock to a lot of people. I don't know if you realize that. The people that are outside the county that live in communities that are inclusive, you know, kind of look at us like and shake their head. We need to support this anti-hate resolution and
You think you can see a county of inclusiveness?
You know, I
Thank you. I really love you.
A lot. I don't really speak a lot regarding this stuff. And
One minute.
You know, I really feel that I'm tired of my county being an embarrassment. I've been so close to moving out. And I want to stay here. It's a beautiful place. But we need to be more inclusive. Thank you.
All righty. That concludes my roster.
Thank you. I need a resolution to close the public session on the floor.
I'll make the motion.
In a second.
I'll second, Anthony.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay, pass. I have very, very limited comments at this time to share. What I will say is that we are now entering hour four of the meeting. And the reason for this is, it was important to the board, and I apologize for any confusion at the start of the meeting, that there would not be the opportunity to speak on the resolutions because they were part of the agenda. And then the opportunity to speak at the end for open public session, I realize that that caused confusion, but that's why there were three public sessions tonight and not two. It was important, as one of the callers had made note in one of the sessions, about the roles and responsibilities of the board. And there is county business to be done under those four major departments as well that needs to be addressed twice a month. And this enabled us to be able to move through and get the business of the county done that is not related to this specific, these two specific resolutions. I'd like to thank a couple people. The one caller, Terry Corso, I believe, her name was, she said it was her first meeting here, and she, you know, she offered her thoughts. And I just want to say that, welcome. And I appreciate you, and I appreciate how, you know, how you came to the board and your suggestions that were thoughtful and kind. And I appreciate your commentary. Also, Amir, who's been here a few times, thank you for following up with me with my message for you last week regarding the books that you have recommended. I appreciate that you responded back, and, you know, we had a decent exchange between us. And to Mick with an M, also, I don't agree with the vast majority of the things that you said tonight, but what I can say is, you reached out to me via county email, you know, just requesting to be involved with some volunteer opportunities and whatnot. I pass that along to Terry to send you a list to see how you can become involved, because again, that's our job as a board. I've said frequently, I remember Commissioner, well, he's not a Commissioner now, I'm sorry, Councilman Hertzberg, who was a former freeholder here. We were at an event a couple years ago with the former chair of the Democratic Committee, and we had never met face-to-face before with this individual. And I remember meeting her and talking with her, and my exact words, sir, I'll never forget, as I said, you know, it's really hard to hate close up. And I stand by those words. There's a lot of exchanges, and there's a lot of hot emotions that go back and forth. And, you know, the board maintains its decorum and extends the respect to have all the speakers talk. Plus, I have to hop in and moderate when members of the public go at one another, because it's hot topics, right? And it's inherent, no matter how much, everybody's human at the end of the day. And if they don't like what another speaker is saying, sometimes it's hard to restrain oneself. But I just want to direct everybody back to the concept. Again, it's, you know, public comes here, they're emotional, they say things like, you're all racist, and you're this and you're that. And, you know, it's, sometimes it's a thankless job, but it's okay because it's what we signed up for. We wouldn't be in these seats and be, you know, willing to sit here and listen to public comment and still work with the public if we weren't committed to working with the public and finding solutions. So again, that's why three public sessions were offered. That's why we'll listen to what you say, and that's why we open these dialogues. No, I don't like everything that you say, and you don't like everything that I say. But I reiterate again, it is hard to hate close up. And I just want everybody to take those words away with them. Another thing that I wanted to mention is, you know, freedom of speech is something that's always protected. Freedom of speech, freedom of the press. But know that this board will always make efforts to correct when incorrect information is put out there. And likewise, at the last meeting, when I spoke and said there were three arrests made in connection with activities in and around the area of the sheriff's home, I was incorrect. There were two arrests made for activities around the home. As far as the other information regarding specifics of the current investigation, when it comes to firearms, gunshots, and so on and so forth, I cannot speak further on that or specifics on that, because it is an ongoing investigation. As these events happened in June, I was privy to some of it via Sheriff Strata, I'm the liaison to the Sheriff's Department. And the Sheriff's Department was present along with the state police. And Sheriff Strata, it is his home. So information, obviously, I was told I was not part of the investigation in any capacity. But again, I was repeating information that I was told in June. Again, I completely got wrong the three instead of two individuals arrested. But it is disheartening to see, you know, when things are jumped on, and I issued an immediate correction of that number. But when things are not fully taken full circle, the board is going to correct that information. And that's not something that will change. We will ask for corrections and honesty in representing what happens here. And last but not least, as far as some of the demonstrations and protests and activities that happened over the summer, different members went to different activities. And I myself did go to probably the largest of the rallies for Black Lives Matter on the Newton Green. And again, it's
With honor protesters.
Excuse me? Excuse, no, no, no. I'm sorry. I have no idea who that is speaking right now. But can the moderator please remove this person finally? Please, enough. Show a little respect. I did not interrupt any speaker. So please. So going to the protests on the Green and being there, you know, things, everybody's perception is the reality. And yes, going there, I saw another group standing across the street, and they were actually, the Newton Police actually were there at that time. And I got to the event, and then I walked up to see you had these individuals standing like across the street. And I talked to the police officer there to find out what was going on, talked to them, came back down. Somebody was nice enough, they gave me a candle. It was the part where they did the candle, and a vigil, and I held that. And it's just the irony of, again, being told I wasn't participating enough or whatever. I, again, there was nobody forcing anybody to go to anything. I was legitimately interested in what was happening there. And I participated in the vigil that was happening at that time. Again, I don't know, we all don't know each other in our personal lives. Obviously, this is somewhat of a professional relationship, right, between an elected board and between the public. It's a professional relationship. But I would just say, you know, look a little deeper. And I'm just going to go back to it again. It's impossible. It's impossible for me, myself, to hate close up. We all have families. We all have careers. We all have passions that we are, you know, absolutely dedicated to. And instead of painting individuals and groups with a broad brush, I think it would do us all a great service to look past that. If your legitimate goal is to find common ground, I think that's where you start. But that's my comments for tonight. And again, I thank everybody for sticking with us. Four hours is a long time. A lot of us get up early and work in the mornings. And again, we signed up for this. You didn't necessarily sign up for this. But I appreciate you, and I appreciate each and every one of you for coming here tonight and sticking it out and sharing all of your thoughts with the board. At this point, we are going to move on to 22. A reminder, again, please, please check the county website. It is updated. And again, I appreciate the comment from Ms. Rattandi about getting more information out in various methods. I do agree that there needs to be multiple modes of communication that we continue, and we're always looking at that. So thank you for bringing that up. But again, easiest way to get a one-stop shop for information for all things COVID is to please visit the Sussex County website, and you'll find information about where you can register for your now, now your notification for vaccination, for testing, and for everything that involves, everything that involves the county. I would also be remiss to, again, not thank our DPW. And not only just the DPW who's out plowing the roads, the individuals who are actually working on the vehicles that help maintain the roads, that entire just department, that faction of individuals are often forgotten. And we don't thank them a lot. It's a thankless job to lay under a truck and fix it. But it's absolutely essential, and it helps keep things moving, helps keep the roads clean and safe. And I got a barrage of positive emails from people who were very, very pleased with the response to snow removal and some of the colossal amounts of snow that we've received. So again, thank you once again to our county employees who absolutely never, ever, ever disappoint. They are phenomenal human beings, and we appreciate you as well. So that's my reminders. And now, number 23, we go to executive session, which is a closed session. So Terry, I'm going to ask you, can you please read into the record?
Yes, I can. Whereas the subject matter is about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B. And whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session in which the public shall be excluded. And be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relates to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B. As number seven, items relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, PBA prosecutors' unit, PBA sheriffs' unit, resolution and media guidelines. And number eight, matters relating to the employment relationship personnel policies. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners, or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. And be it further resolved that upon the completion of the business for which the Board has entered into executive session, I just need clarification, will the Board reconvene and resume its meeting in open session, or will you be adjourning from executive session?
We'll be adjourning from executive session, because I don't expect action, formal action to be taken.
Okay. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board expects not to take formal action, and therefore will adjourn from executive session.
Okay. I need a motion to enter into executive session.
I make the motion.
I'm sorry, I heard Herb as a first. May I have a second, please? Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? Okay, pass. We are entering into executive session. Again, thank you, everybody, for participating tonight, and we look forward to speaking with you next week. Or not, I'm sorry, not next week, good lord, next month. Thank you.